Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of October 3rd, 2017 to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Chris Smith of South Coast Church International.
Please stand for the invocation and remain standing and we're gonna ask Troop, I'm sorry, 438 to come up and give the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alright, let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this beautiful city we get to live in. And Lord, as looking at the beauty we have, we certainly, as a community, pray for those in Las Vegas and throughout our nation who face so much hardship. We pray your comfort and grace upon them. And Lord, as we gather as a city, as our leaders stand before us, Lord, we pray on their behalf. Lord, would you give them wisdom? Would you guide their steps where the decisions aren't sure? Would you make it clear, the decisions that need to be made, put in place the things that need to be in place? And again, guide every step, everything they do. Bless this group here, the managerial staff behind them, every level of authority in this city we lift before you today. We pray God, guide them in this meeting and guide them as they go from this meeting in all the decisions they make. Bless this time, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would Troop 438 come up?
The audience, may the audience please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job on the pledge. Councilmember Donchak, Councilmember Hamm, Councilmember Swartz.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Here.
Mayor Ward.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is an update by staff concerning the proposed toll road, and I have a couple cards on this item.
Can you put this up? Oh.
Yeah, we recently had a meeting in Sacramento with Caltrans to discuss the toll road and some other issues. We learned at that meeting that the TCA is now studying 20 ideas, as they call them. It's gone from 18 to 20. Number 19 and 20, as you see up on the screen, connect the 241 to the 15 in Temecula, and double decking the I-5 freeway. I asked Caltrans, what exactly did they mean by double decking? Where would they start to double deck it? How wide would it be? Would it be just the carpool lanes? Would it be extra lanes? How far would it go? And they told me they didn't have an idea of what it would look like. I asked TCA similar questions. What exactly does the route look like to the city of Temecula? What does double decking look like? They still haven't responded to my emails inquiries about that. So, that's the latest news that we have. Scott, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing publicly, thanks.
No, I didn't have that one. We also have a timetable from TCA on the project. We're looking at beginning the project initiation in June of 18. They'll look to prepare the technical studies in 2018 to 2019. 2020 is the draft EIR/ES process. The final EIR in sometime later in 2020, and then in 2021, the record of decision. And then the process will finish at that point, as they see it, as TCA sees it. So I'll put these slides up on the city webpage for the public to see and have for consumption.
I think this timeline is good. I think the public should know that TCA is in the project initiation process, that they plan on no other public forums. So, we need to know that they've cut that off and they are actually in the process. So it's not just June. June is when Caltrans believes that they will come up with their project report. So, I think, but it's good that you got this. I know you really worked hard to try to get this out of Caltrans and TCA. So, we finally have a date. So that part is good. I don't have any other... No? Okay. So, let's go to the cards.
Actually, one other thing. We had a very successful toll road trek. There were over 200 of you that showed up for that. The naturalists did a fantastic job. And Laura Ferguson has put a Vimeo on the website which talks about the open space and the alignments that could be viewed from the Forrester Ranch Ridgeline Trail. So thank you to the over 200 of you that turned out because it was a tough hike. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two cards. First speaker is Don Kuntzey, followed by James Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Don Kuntzey, City of San Clemente. My main thing is, I need an explanation about this lawsuit. I'm kinda confused. I was along with the walk. I wanna know what that was all about, as far as the route that's being concerned and considered in that. The way I understand it, the city council here voted five, nothing regarding no to the toll road, no to those routes. And I need an explanation about that. I would appreciate it this evening, too, if you could get to it. And I guess that parallels, then we filed a lawsuit against the toll road regarding what? I'm hearing different things regarding that, that the lawsuit is gonna say no to the southern route that we, I guess, canceled out a while back that I was involved with. And as far as going on the walk and things like that, I've been asking the city for a long time now to address this map in the general plan. And it was considered a little bit on the walk, was talked a little bit about it. I'd like to know, what is open space? Where is it? Does it belong to the city? And if it does, if you vote it no, how can somebody come and put a road through our open space? And I guess that paralleling, too, then I heard that, well, part of it might be that there might be a consideration of building a park on a piece of property out there. My concerns with that is, going along with your budget, it's telling me that it's 47% reduction on park maintenance. I don't see how we can afford another park to go along those way. And just my local park that I belong at, well, that is San Luis Rey. And that was nice, you put all the fancy new equipment in there. But with wood chips underneath all the equipment, bubble gum and lollipop sticks, every Sunday I go by there and walk through there to clean it up myself. I guess, coming along with that, I just received my property tax bill in the mail, and I believe part of that goes to the city to manage the city. And I don't want a single dollar of my tax dollar going to a lawsuit against the toll road people. If that's the way we're going, then do what I have to do. Hire a public defender, please. So if I could get an explanation about the lawsuit, I would appreciate it.
Scott, I don't know if, in part of our update, could we just give a general consensus?
Yeah, I can give a brief response. As a matter of public record, the city has filed a petition against TCA. Its demands are as follows: The freeway route should not include San Clemente open space or open space preserved under Measure V. There are a couple of clarifying ordinances that the council has asked us to bring forward that you will consider next month, that make it very, very clear that any roads allowed in San Clemente open space have to be local arterials, as designated in the circulation element of your general plan. There's some vestiges of the old alignment in the city's general plan and the Toleda specific plan that we'll be recommending that you remove because they're moot now, as regarding those alignments. Then, the second point in the lawsuit is the freeway should not involve land that's protected under existing mitigation agreements with resource agencies, which they would. And then, decision-making authority alternatives for south county mobility solutions should be exercised by agencies with broader authority to implement a freeway and employ other circulation strategies, not just toll roads. And TCA has only the ability to build toll roads, and so therefore, the council thinks that it's ill-equipped to look at broader solutions. And last but not least, Loews Patronas Parkway right now is designated a free county arterial. We've sued the county and toll road and TCA to make sure that Loews Patronas remains free and open, as it is now, well, it's planned to be now. It's dedicated as a public county highway to the public, and the city's demanding that it remains that way. So that, in a nutshell, is the, those are the council's demands, and they've been more memorialized in the lawsuit that we filed and through other means that the city manager explained.
Okay, and Don, why don't you set up a meeting with me and we can talk about all the other issues? Okay? Mondays.
Mayor, can I say just one last thing, just to clarify? TCA talks a lot about permitting public input on these strategies and alternatives. It's not their prerogative to permit public input. Any member of the public can go to any meeting of that agency when they hold them and give three minutes worth of input every time they meet. So, no one should go away from here with the understanding that TCA somehow gets to turn off public input because as a public agency, it's obligated to hear that, no matter how long it makes their day, every time they meet.
I appreciate that. That wasn't my intention in saying that, but I do appreciate that because I don't want the public to stop the input. It's so important. But everyone needs to know that there isn't another public forum for this, that they are in the initiation process of a project.
And they want people to think that then they can't go talk.
They're done. Yeah, it's closed. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay, our next speaker is James Rosen.
Am I at the right mic? The volume was? Okay. So first off, I wanted to thank you all for what you've done to oppose the toll road. I think I would say I'm in violent agreement with your position. That said, I think another way of saying that is that we share a common objective, specifically to preserve, do everything we can to preserve the character of San Clemente. And in this case, we understand that the toll road, as proposed, will significantly threaten the character of San Clemente. That said, I would also argue that we could probably pretty quickly agree, if we had a moment to discuss it, that as much as the city council in the city is doing to oppose the toll road, you're probably also aware that there are a number of residents that wants to do what they can do to oppose the toll road and to make sure that this issue and threat to the community is put to bed. There are a number of grassroots organizations, folks are trying to get organized. But my question for all of you is, what can you all, as the city council, and city manager, and so forth, who essentially have, from a position, as well as resources, what can you do to either take the lead or collaborate with others to establish a common strategy? Assuming we have a common objective, to establish a common strategy, priorities, and essentially a work plan and effort so that we can then take advantage of resources? Another way of looking at that is, if we all work together, and if we have a common plan, that all of us who are out there who want to oppose the toll road will be in a better position to work together, and no one's doing all the heavy lifting. And most likely, we'll be much more effective. So that's a question. What can you all, as city council, do to either take a leadership role or participate with others and take advantage of a greater pool of resources? And I'm happy to have discussions offline, just probably not for, you know, direct response now.
Yeah, I'll call you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have something to say, I've opened up. Is this okay?
This is, is this good? Is that the toll road? Yeah.
Does she have a card in?
I didn't have the card.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No, no, same now. Oh, okay.
That's, I turned it on. My plea to the Transportation Corridor Agency. I can put in word the healing that came through Earth Day 2015. There's elders in the sky looking down upon us. May we respect them even though they be unseen. I don't think they would be happy with roads tearing up their turf. It's like bulldozing your grandma and your grandpa's deluxe crypt. Rodney Dangerfield said it well, "Have respect." I agree with him. Please, Transportation Corridor Agency, my little jingle is this: No toll road, property sold, the Hakaman tribe came first. Do not tear that away from them. The Grim Reaper might just come and get you and give you an early death way before your time like Paul Walker. The Hakaman tribe came first, even before 1492. Christopher Columbus made their acquaintance and they lived peaceably among each other, much the same way as the lion and the lamb. The Hakaman tribe children baptized by Father Gomez were of Mary's little lamb, and what that land and turf La Cristianita is all about is our sacred roots. To build roads in the name of progress opposes what the pilgrims brought us each Thanksgiving. And the Hakaman tribe progress is right there with the pilgrims. Please, Transportation Corridor Agency, give this some thought, and please lean in this the direction of no toll road. I don't want lightning coming down and strike you because the spirits are mad. Look at Paul Walker. His Porsche blew up because he was speeding where the car is known to faulty spontaneously combust. I say, don't tamper with Mother Nature. Please, lean in the direction of no toll road, and if need be, take to heart my little jingle. No toll road, property sold, the Hakaman tribe came first. No toll road, Hakaman, no toll road, property sold, the Hakaman tribe came first. No toll road, property sold, Hakaman tribe came first. Pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey ho, jury. Just got to give a little plug for Anne Rule and the bottom portion of a lady's lug and fishnets and stockings, exclamation point. By honoring Mother Nature, we honor her lady in red. Don't tear her up, but honor her and lift her on high. We won't be sorry. Chief Seattle will heal our wounded knee. And so I say my statement and declaration: No toll road, property sold, the Hakaman tribe came first. Pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey, pan hey, pan hey ho, pan hey ho, jury.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
We're in good hands.
Next is presentation by Patrick Tennant, Senior Manager, Mitigation and Restoration Section with San Clemente Edison, concerning an update on plans to expand the Wheeler North Artificial Kelp Reef.
Does this advance? All right. So, we met about a year ago, and I was kind of talking about the conversations that we were having with the Coastal Commission. The California Coastal Commission was making some recommendations based on some scientific studies that we were doing on the reef about potentially expanding it. And we're at a point now where we're starting to move forward with indeed expanding the reef. At the time, we were still kind of up in the air as to whether or not it was necessary. But I think we've all come to agreement that it's the right thing to do moving forward. Oops. Which one? There we go. Just as very quick reminder, the reason that we are constructing reef offshore, the San Onofre plant during its operation would take turbid water stirred up within the sand break areas and put that out into the more clear, pristine water, and we would have kind of this redistribution of the sandy water that would travel over an existing kelp bed. That exists, that kelp bed was determined to be approximately 200 acres in size, at least potential-wise. So, one of the agreements for constructing the plant and operating it was to mitigate for that. In 1999, we created Phase One, which constituted about 22.4 acres. Those were test plots that we studied for about five years to kind of give us a roadmap on how to expand further on that. In 2008, we built an additional 152 acres. And so what you have out there now, if you were out standing on the pier looking out, is about a total of 174 acres. The California Coastal Commission has independent monitors that watch the reef, and they monitor it for a total of 15 standards. Eleven of them are relative, which means they're compared to reference reefs outside of the operating area of San Onofre. And then they have four absolute standards, which are numerical numbers that have to be met. The reef must meet its, these compliance standards for a term equal to the operating life of the plant, which right now is about 32 years. We've been monitoring it since 2009, so we finished construction in 2008. They began monitoring in 2009. And as you see, we have a summary here. There's one kind of outstanding feature there, and that happens to be the fish standing stock. The fish standing stock requirement is 28 metric tons, or 28, sorry, standard tons. And we've been ranging at about half of that. What the Coastal Commission provided, based on their analysis, is eight options on how we could expand the reef. The idea would be to get us from that 14 standard tons up to the 28. We've been analyzing these different options here, what was critical to determine how we could do that. If you look at this map, the original reef, which was the red area, we would have to expand this up to potentially 200 acres. What we needed to do was determine whether or not there was the suitable habitat out there to do that. Within the blue area, we had already surveyed those areas, but we needed to get out into the green area to do some further analysis to determine whether or not we could. We did sonar, we sent divers out, they stuck the bottom to see what the sand looked like. And what we came up with was a 200-acre option. And this is what we feel will best meet the needs. It will establish the fish that we need, bring them into the system. And the beauty of this design is it very much mimics what we have out there now, which is kind of a known commodity. We've been studying it for a long time. We know how it responds, we know how it acts. But it'll essentially double the size of the reef that we have out there now. And so, in a reference perspective, you can see the San Clemente pier there. The original reef in the red gets nearly up to the pier. The new expansion would go significantly further up north from there. The goal that we have is, this is a little more of a long linear shape, and it's really to maximize that ocean edge because that's where we get the most fish. And so, we're working on designs right now. We have to go through the SEQA process. That will dictate the final design, but this is kind of a very high-level project schedule. We have submitted our project description to the State Lands Commission, who will be the lead SEQA agency. They will not have their consultant onboard probably until December. At that point, they'll begin the SEQA process, and we're hoping to have that completed by April or June of next year, at which time we would go forth with the coastal development permit process. And if everything, and everything lines up perfectly, we could actually begin dropping rock as early as late summer next year. We have a very narrow window in between June and October to construct. We gotta, we can't construct beyond October 1st because of lobster season. And so, and prior to June, we get a lot of wave surge. So, we have a very narrow window. If we can't get started until August of next year, we won't have enough time to build all of the reef. And it may be a two-season construction, which means we would begin construction in 2018 for a couple of months, and then come back in and finish in that timeframe in 2019. So, that was a very quick update. I know I moved through that very quickly, but if you had any, I wanted to leave some time for questions, if you had any questions.
I didn't have any questions. I know I asked for this update a few months back, so thanks for coming out and doing it. I know the last project you guys had was a fantastic increase to the quality of surf we have here in San Clemente, so I'm looking forward to the second half of this going in. Thank you.
Just a question, only because of the season we've had. Did a great job with the reef that we've got there, and it brought in more sea life, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We've been having visitors that have been eating that sea life.
Yes.
What are the odds, when we double the size of the reef, to double the size of our sea life there, are we going to be increasing our visitations, the length of them, both in the visitors as well as how long they hang around? What do we think?
And that's actually a good question, and I recognize which visitors we're talking about specifically. But yes, sharks in general are obviously, you know, they will feed on fish. We typically haven't seen an increase within the reef area of some of the larger sharks. We do get a lot of the bottom sharks. One of the, you know, the leopard sharks are very common in the reef. The larger sharks don't like to get tangled up in the kelp. They typically will stay away from the kelp areas. And most of the fish that we have out there are not like the big schooling fish. Typically, what the great whites in particular are after are the seals. And increases in populations of the seal up and down the coast has largely driven some of that increase. But that is a concern. We are actually looking at that. That is something that we will be analyzing. And we've been reaching out to shark experts, both at Cal State Northridge, and we're looking and getting some involved down at Cal State Long Beach to take a look at these things.
Thank you very much.
Next is presentation of a proclamation to Julia Darden Lince, Kathy Darden Lince, and Jim Nielsen, proclaiming the month of October 2017 as Pier Pride Month.
Darden Lences are not here, they're planning for the planning commission tomorrow.
Whereas, the historic San Clemente pier has served as the heart of the city of San Clemente since 1928. And whereas, prior to 2012, the pier was a beneficiary of California redevelopment funds, but that funding has evaporated when the state dissolved the redevelopment agencies. Pier Pride was formed as a nonprofit organization dedicated to working in partnership with the city and community stakeholders to fill the gaps between city funding and the pier's needs. Whereas, Pier Pride's goal is to raise sufficient funds over the next couple of years to provide an endowment for the pier that will ensure its preservation for generations to come. So, I, as the mayor of San Clemente, with the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Pier Pride Month. And do you want to talk a little bit about what you've got going on for this month?
I'll do that very briefly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a presentation, Joan?
Yes.
Pier Pride was formed probably a year and a half ago, and we've had a very busy year. We've gone through the process of becoming tax-exempt with both franchise tax and the IRS. About this time last year, we held our first big fundraising drive, and we were able to raise enough funds to do a professional cleaning and painting of the pier for the first time in anybody's history. I don't think Fred Zweigels could even remember when it was done properly last. But that's finally completed after a very long year. And now we're moving into October, let me see, how do I advance this? Thanks, Laura. October being Pier Pride Month is another very busy month for our small board. Last Friday, we had an exclusive sunset dinner at the Fisherman's as a fundraiser, and it was very successful. We raised about $10,000. On Sunday, we had a booth, again in conjunction with Fisherman's. We were peddling our wares and the story of what Pier Pride is doing. And we worked the Seafest, dishing up Manhattan-style chowder provided by the Fisherman's. On October 10th, we have a fundraiser at Wahoo. There's a document on the website or your telephone, show them to the folks at Wahoo, and a portion of the proceeds will come directly to Pier Pride. Our largest event, far and away, is the light up the pier on October 13th. Last year, we had a similar situation. There's a concurrent party going on at the Casa Romanica to honor our people that have been significant sponsors. And we had a lot of people down on the pier, and at a signal from the casa, those individuals held up their cellphones, turned the flashlights on, and outlined the entire pier with their flashlights. And we flew a drone over and captured some footage. It was a kind of unique thing. This year, we have other activities on the pier, begins at 6 o'clock on the 13th, which I think is a Friday night, and we're going to be doing the similar thing. On the 17th of October, we have, again, a fundraiser at Chipotle. We'll talk a little while later, but on the 21st, we're hosting a fishing derby in conjunction with Fish for Life, and I believe Jim Holden is here, and we're going to talk about that a little later in the evening. On October 25th, again, we have another fundraiser put on by Blaze Pizza for us, and the proceeds are going to be donated to Pier Pride. That's all I have, is there's a flyer for the October 13th event.
Thank you for your effort. Thank you.
Next is presentation of a proclamation to Mary Gray Purdue of Family Assistance Ministries, proclaiming October 15th, 2017, as the day set apart for the Hunger Walk.
Kathy, before you start with that, I have to step out. And so, I just want to apologize for everyone that came this evening. I have to go back to work. So, for all the hospital supporters that came out this evening, thank you for your support, and good luck the rest of the evening.
All right. I was looking for you in the audience. There's so many people, I had trouble seeing you. We want to recognize as a city, FAM, and your Hunger Walk. It's the 30th Annual FAM Hunger Walk, which is going to occur on October 15th, 2017, and the proceeds will benefit individuals and families in crisis in South Orange County. But we want to recognize FAM for the work that you do in our community. You've redistributed over $1.7 million worth of food and personal care items to our hungry neighbors just in this past year alone. You also, for our community, serve as a hub for social services, bringing together local churches, schools, businesses, civic organizations, and the city of San Clemente, and hundreds of caring citizens to prevent duplication of services within the entire county. So, we want to recognize you for that. But today, as the mayor of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, I do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 15th, 2017, as a day to set apart for the FAM Hunger Walk.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I think you have a few things to say.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council, thank you so much for this wonderful partnership that we have with the city. The things that we do, of course, are to help the citizens of San Clemente. Over 70% of those we help are San Clemente citizens. So, last year, we had over 58,000 encounters with people who were hungry. 11,393 unique people, and 70% of those are right here from San Clemente. Isn't that amazing? It's a lot of people that are in need, and we're honored to be able to help them. So, the food that we rescue, 310 fresh rescues every evening, or every week, sorry, 310 fresh rescues... 310 fresh rescues every evening, or every week, sorry, 310 fresh rescues every week, goes to helping people with that near-expiration food that comes from the grocery stores. But we were also chosen as a pilot agency for Starbucks and Second Harvest. We were one of three agencies in the nation that were chosen, and we were, after that, they've rolled it out nationwide. So, we pick up 35 fresh Starbucks rescues every single night. So, we have nighttime employees now, which is awesome. Real quickly, I just wanted to tell you one or two stories. And one is, we had a senior came to see us in this last month. She had dental work that she needed to get done, wasn't expecting it, and came to see us and couldn't afford her utilities or food. So, we were able to, of course, help her with food and her utilities, which kept her from becoming homeless. Another is a single mom who came to see us. She had had some domestic violence. Her child was older now, but in another state, and she was struggling, was able to connect with somebody, a friend of hers in Colorado, who had a room for her. She was homeless, living in her car. So, we were able to help her with food and with gas cards, and we were able to get her to Colorado. So, she's no longer homeless here in our city, but back with somebody who can help take care of her. So, a week from Sunday, October 15th, we would love you all to come out, we would love you all to come out and join us. About 600 people come out every year, and it is a culmination of lots of organizations that support the effort. See, our T-shirt from last year has all of the sponsors on it, okay? And Lorraine has this year's shirt for you. The sponsors aren't on it yet, but this is the shirt that people are wearing to drum up business right now. And then, when you come to the walk, we'll give you your shirts. We would love to see you. Your constituents will be there. They would love to see you. It's because it's the 30th annual, there will be TV there. We will have one booth, and that one booth will be no toll roads. All the rest will be children's games, and a band will be playing, and there'll be food, starting at 12:30 on the 15th.
Yeah, I'll hand them out.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to tell you where the walk is?
Yeah.
You have to guess. It is at the community center. So, it starts at the community center. It's 2.5-mile walk, and it ends at the community center. Then it'll be going around all the businesses.
Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part 1, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. And I do have cards.
All right. So, we have 30 minutes. We're starting at 5 to 7. And our first speaker is going to be Wayne Eggleston, followed by Charles Mann. And the next speaker would be Carol Wilson.
Thank you. Before I get into my presentation of open space, I wanted to hand out to you the Camp Pendleton celebrating 75 years. It's a terrific brochure and magazine with regard to all the history of Camp Pendleton, so I wanted to give those to you. I wanted to come here this evening to reintroduce to you San Clemente for Open Space. San Clemente for Open Space started back in 2007, actually, a year before I got on city council. And over the years, they were responsible for three ballot initiatives that were presented to the council. Measure C, this is the ballot initiative stopped the city council that was willing to pave over open space in Rancho San Clemente. Measure V, the residents of San Clemente now have the final say on development that would attempt to use open space. And Measure A, voters blocked the city from selling our North Beach lot to a developer for pennies on the dollar, which was dedicated for a city park and beach parking. Measure C was put on the ballot via the collection of signatures and a petition and a local veto referendum process by a group that wanted to rescind an action taken by city council in June 2007. That action allowed nine of the seven golf holes at the Pacific Golf Club to be converted to residential medium-low zoning designation in order to allow 224 homes to be erected. A yes vote was in favor of the city council action, a no vote was in opposition to the proposed development. No vote was 69%. Measure V, the city of San Clemente Open Space Ordinance was on the November 4, 2008 ballot for voters in the city of San Clemente, where it was approved. It was approved by 72%, 72%. And my favorite, of course, was the Measure A, which stopped the development of the Playa del Norte project on open space down in North Beach, land that was designated by the legal documents which stated that those parcels were to be used for a city park and beach parking. And that was defeated by 50, nearly 58%. So, San Clemente for Open Space group has really done a lot throughout the years to preserve our open space here in San Clemente. And so, I just wanted to reinduce it this evening to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mann?
My name is Charles Mann, and I'm honored and grateful of being a member of Save San Clemente Open Space. And to me, San Clemente is the last jewel in South Orange County that has a large amount of open space. And the cities around us wish that they would have done something about their open space before in trying to save it. But once you build on open space, it's gone and gone forever. So, I want to thank, in that vein, the hard work that all the residents put into saving open space for San Clemente. Definitely had a huge impact on the city and its future. And it's actually been able to shift the powers of the vote to the residents, so the residents can actually dictate if they want to give up open space for a development. And tonight, what I wanted to do was to actually continue open space as being a voice for the residents, as well as continue the role of leadership that open space has had in the past. And to that extent, I would like to donate a check to the city for keeping the toll road out of San Clemente. And it's a big check.
[laughing]
Literally, it's a big check. It's $5,000. And the purpose behind that is that we want to make sure that San Clemente maintains its open space and doesn't let the toll road go through it. We also would like to encourage the city council to adopt an action, to be able to, an advisory action by the residents, to see if they want to have a toll road going through the middle of town. And the purpose behind that is actually significant. If we demonstrate that the residents don't want a toll road going down through the middle of town, then it will send a clear message to the toll road that San Clemente is out of limits. In addition, it will actually be an example and an inspiration for other cities to do a similar thing. In addition to that, it will actually put San Clemente in a point of leadership and a point of leverage to where potentially, we could stop the toll road forever from coming through San Clemente. And, of course, it would save open space and provide greater property values for San Clemente. I would like to just finally make a point that Save San Clemente Open Space would like to sponsor the advisory vote and be able to work with the city so that the wording can be good for the city, beneficial to the city, but more importantly, to the residents of San Clemente. Thank you.
I just want to say, on behalf of the council, all the work that the Save Open Space has done has really, it's almost like you knew what was going to happen and how important that was going to be. We didn't realize how important our open space was going to be. We know that our residents love it, and it's a big part of their life, is the open space and our hiking trails. But I see two other members of the Open Space Committee, and I wanted to see, Gary, if you guys would come up and take a picture, if you could take that for us?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, we've got plenty of them, actually.
Can everyone come up?
Well, we've got them in disguise.
Okay. And part of this, so everyone knows, is the city council reimbursed the, what was it?
The Ocean Fest.
The Ocean Fest Committee for the $5,000 that they would have received for the toll road booth in there. And the council decided to cover that so that the TCA would not come because it was so upsetting to have them here, to our residents. So, we wanted to do that. So, you're reimbursing us for that, is what this check is.
Well, actually, this check is really for the advisory vote.
Oh, it is, okay.
Because we're actually pushing forward.
I think we want more.
We're pushing forward. We want to make sure.
All right. I thought this was, okay. So, can you just, I want to take a, you know, picture with that.
$5,000 is $5,000 anyway.
It is.
It's a lot, it's a big check.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you for clarifying that.
Thanks.
But I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And it's good for everyone to know who you guys are, so, thank you.
My name is Carol Wilson. I want to say hello to some old friends I haven't seen in some time. Good to see you. I'm here tonight to thank and also commend you, the council, for your work and support to getting us a hospital here in San Clemente again. And I know it's a hard road and it's a lot of difficult choices, but I want you to know that you're so appreciated. If we had an event like they had in Las Vegas, a lot more people would have died because we have no place to take them. We have nuclear waste here, as you all know. Same situation, lack of hospital space to take these people for not only emergencies, but aftercare. And so, with big events like that, we throw big events in our city, we could have a situation. What would we do with the people? So, I just urge that you do your best against whatever tide is coming towards you, to keep up the good fight for us, and let us have the health care that we need and deserve in the city. And we just really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I'm going to call out three names. Please line up and speak. Michael Clark, followed by Debbie Weddle, followed by Steve Cohen.
And Mayor, this is actually a good time for me to say, I also have to leave. My mother, who is a 40-year resident of San Clemente, was admitted, went to the emergency room. We both went this morning at 11:00 at Mission. She just now is getting admitted. She's been there eight hours, and so I need to go now and take care of that. But while I was there, the triage nurse told me that in anticipation of the flu season, they're going to be putting a tent in the parking lot for people that come to the ER with flu conditions so that they can contain that kind of trauma in one area. And the staff is overworked. My mother was in a wheelchair in the hallway from 11:00 until about 5:00 before they had a bed for her to be taken care of. So, all of you that are here in support of our hospital, fight the good fight because we desperately need this emergency room in South Orange County.
Well said. Okay, all right. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. My name is Mike Clark. I'm a resident of San Clemente. And I made out my card saying that I wanted to talk about the hospital, but what I really want to do is piggyback on what Carol just said and say thank you. And thank you for placing the health and safety of our community first. Looking back, thank you for stepping up to the plate when Memorial Care tried to tell us that this futuristic urgent care center would be better than an emergency department in a hospital. Thank you for seeing through that. Thank you for taking the unprecedented high road in rezoning that property, to say that, you know, you can do this other stuff, but what our community needs is a hospital and an emergency department. Thank you for putting up with all the unnecessary and dishonest political stuff that has been raised about this hospital. I read an editorial in the Orange, I think it was the Orange County Register, a month or so ago, and some bozo is saying, you know, we need a toll road because of the health and safety needs of the people in San Clemente.
[laughing]
You know, and, well, to take it even a step further, this is a guy who represented an organization that wanted to buy the property and continue the hospital. And he blamed the city council for closing the hospital in the article. I mean, I'm not here to talk about that, but I'm here to say thank you for putting up with all this stuff and continuing what you're continuing to do. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for demonstrating by your actions and not just your words that you do continue to put the health and safety of our community first. And we're here to continue to help you and do whatever we can because the need hasn't changed, as we just heard. It's only gotten worse. What we predicted was going to happen is happening, and that's not good stuff. So, you know, I want to give some applause to this evening, and I want to give some applause to you. So, thank you very much.
Debbie Weddle, followed by Dr. Steve Cohen, followed by Reverend Thomas Kugler.
Hello. I am familiar with many of you, and I concur many thank yous for your support. I'm a registered nurse. I was employed at San Clemente for 32 years. My end of my career was an administrative health supervisor on both the day shift and the night shift. I could fill pages and pages of patients that we saved, from newborns, literally newborns, to seniors. Three cardiac full arrests, back to back. We handled it. We saved them. Two of them would not have survived en route to Mission Hospital. I concur and feel sorry for Lori's mom. I know, from my own experience, eight to nine hours wait time at Mission Hospital. I was going to say some other things, and I've changed it because some of our wonderful nursing staff is here. We need a hospital. Needless to say, we are all aware. Mission can't take care of surfing accidents. They don't surf at Mission, to be able. However, build us a hospital. We have incredible staff. Many of them are here tonight. Please, please, continue to agree and build us a new hospital. It is an injustice to every age group and to all the communities not to be able to supply them with a community hospital. We never wanted to be a trauma center. We want to be an outstanding community hospital. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. We're back. We're still here, actually. Mr. Schwartz, much of this is for your benefit. You have not have as much exposure to the eternal optimism and mostly quiet exuberance that is the SOS campaign. We'd like to get you to keep doing exactly what you're doing. The problem that we face is no less severe now than it was last May when the hospital closed, May before last when the hospital closed. A few months ago, I asked you guys to try and get some information. I mentioned to you guys that in trying to figure out deaths that might occur because of prolonged transport times, that those numbers are really not available because legally, you can't die in the back of an ambulance. And that's not a joke. Legally, you can't. You know, when paramedics start CPR, they do it, and they continue until they get to the hospital. Somebody may be dead on scene because of a horrific accident, or they may be declared dead at the hospital, but not in between. And because of that, those numbers aren't published, but those numbers are uniquely sensitive to San Clemente. And if you go to the Orange County EMS website, you might be curious about how well we respond to emergencies in San Clemente. What What you'll find on the Orange County EMS website is a percentage of time that the EMS units respond appropriately, in other words, in what's considered an approved amount of time. They won't tell you on the website what those times are, they just consider whether or not you fit within their parameters of approved. Now, if you look at the cities that are included in that list, you won't find San Clemente. And the problem there is that San Clemente is considered rural, and because San Clemente is considered rural, the accepted response time is 25 minutes. So if somebody in this room is having a heart attack, our, our EMS system is top-notch, and I'm sure that they would, they would be here as quick as they can, but the truth is, is they might not be in the city when the call comes out. As long as they get here within 25 minutes, which may be long after horrible things have happened, their response time is considered adequate, and will be, will be recorded as so on the Orange County EMS website. So I would implore you guys again to try and find out that information and try and get actual response times so that you can then use that information to try and lobby for what you've, you've lobbied for before. The people that stand behind me are lots of people, but they include doctors and nurses and other medical professionals that work now at Mission Hospital, at Mission Laguna, at Saddleback Memorial, all of whom would come back to San Clemente in an instant, all these people still live in San Clemente, all of whom would come back to San Clemente Hospital in a second should that hospital be open. I thank you again for your efforts.
Reverend Kugler, followed by Warren Vedreen, followed by Gus Giallamis.
I'm Reverend Kugler, can I speak from back here?
No, I'm sorry, you have to come up to the mic so the people at home can see you.
Oh, okay. My mobility leaves me a little bit slow here.
That is, that is acceptable.
Where do I go?
Right here.
My microphone.
So, after the Reverend, Warren Vedreen, please come up, followed by Dr. Giallamis.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. I know we're about up to our half hour time, and I don't want to take more than a minute. I want to reiterate the gratitude that my wife and I feel for the council and all of your efforts to bring the hospital back. We bought a house in Forester Ranch, San Clemente, about 10 years ago with the assumption that a hospital would be here for our older age, we're now in our 70s, and it's, we really appreciate all your efforts. I also want to say that I had the opportunity to get a bill through the state legislature when I was a state chaplain, and part of that was a whole bunch of people contacting the governor, and if you haven't done so, I want to encourage you to follow up on that email that you may have gotten, and send a message to the governor saying, please sign, people are dying unless we get this bill through and get a hospital back. Thank you.
Hello, yes, we need a hospital, absolutely. This spring, I explained what I thought was a good strategy that would help us, get us there, and I, a bunch of people up here nodded enthusiastically, including the two who's had to leave. I then left town to, to visit relatives, mostly in France, and extended vacation, and also launched my granddaughter, which was a whole lot of fun. So, at long last, I am back. I, I still don't see that piece of property explained, maybe I haven't looked in the right place, but I'm back. So, who do I talk to? So, this is a question, who do I talk to? What is the best way for me to proceed to that end? Because whether or not that's the actual piece of property that ends up being the site is less important than, I believe, than its strategic, strategic function in getting us there. I think it can break the roadblock, as I explained before. So, who do I see?
You can speak to me at mayor's hours, or you can contact Chris Hamm or Councilman Schwartz, who are on the committee for this, and they can explain, you know, we, we've heard your suggestions, we've, it's not like we haven't been doing anything, we've been very active, but if you want, we can meet.
This is, I know this is only one small part of the whole effort, but I think that it's, it's one of the things that can help tip, tip the scales.
Okay, if you call in, we do mayor's hours on Mondays, 4:30 to 6:00.
I'll do that, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Giallamis, and then our last speaker is Anthony Lafrana.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for putting up with a lot of grief, I'm sure, from lobbyists to Memorial Care pushing you. It's been almost two years since Saddleback Memorial closed their San Clemente campus. We've all heard stories about increased transport and wait times at surrounding hospitals, who are also overwhelmed with emergency patients. It's just common sense that this would occur, and has been documented many times in literature. We here in South County have seen its effects firsthand. We've heard the stories about San Clemente residents waiting for hours at other hospitals. In addition, and more importantly, we've heard from our paramedics directly telling us that they've had to bypass the now shuttered San Clemente Saddleback Hospital with critically ill patients, some of whom may have survived if only there were emergency services close by. Recently, Senator Skinner from Oakland sponsored Senate Bill 687, which allows the Attorney General to have a say whether or not a not-for-profit hospital like Saddleback Memorial Care can close its doors in the community it committed to serve. This bill is retroactive, which will cause San Clemente Memorial Hospital in Laguna Hills and its corporate office, Memorial Care, to perhaps rethink its closure. The legislation passed with the help of our Assemblyman Bill Bro, the only Republican to have voted for the bill. Clearly, Assemblyman Bro understood the details of how a hospital closure affects not only his district, but surrounding areas as well. We praise Assemblyman Bill Bro and his support for the health and safety of this community. We also have high praise for our San Clemente City Council for its steadfast support to bring back a hospital with an emergency room to our town. Please, everyone here and at home, call or write Governor Brown's office, ask him to sign SB 687. Thank you.
Last speaker is Anthony Lafrana. Okay, I didn't, I didn't see him, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so that, that concludes our oral communications. Could we have a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances? Motion by Brown, second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3, 0? Okay, 3 0. Close session report, city attorney.
Whoa, 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 please, we're trying to finish our, our meeting.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, can you take it outside, please?
Mike is helping out, so.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate that. So we've just waived reading in full of all ordinances? Right, and next is close session report, city attorney.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and council, there was no reportable action taken in closed session. On one item, the first case, Villas and Clemente versus City of San Clemente, I and my firm had a prior representation that disqualify us from counseling the city on that matter, so the council met without me there to consider advice and direction from Conflicts Council hired in that case.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. Unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion in action, the public has requested the removal of items D and J. Okay, D and J, it's public, I also was going to pull D. Anyone else?
I.
Okay, I, Steve?
No, I'll figure, we'll go home by midnight, so I'm.
Okay, is there a motion to waive the balance?
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3 0. Okay, item D.
C was first, move full C.
Wait, item your C. It's not, it's. D, I, and J. I and J. You're making me nervous, like my hearing is going like my eyesight.
I was trying to, I was C.
Okay. Would you like to hear from the public first?
Yeah, maybe that'd be best, and then myself and Samantha can do a brief report thereafter.
Okay, okay, so I have one card on it, Jim Nielsen.
Good evening again, I'll make this brief, as I mentioned earlier, Pier Pride for its month of October, one of the events has been planned, is quite unique, on the 21st, we're going to host a fishing derby on the pier for, in conjunction with Fish for Life, Jim Holden, who I have here. They've been taking special needs children out on boats for quite some time, and it's a very moving experience, so Pier Pride and Fish for Life are going to be teaming up for this event on the pier on the 21st. And our purpose tonight is to ask you to waive whatever fees might be permissible so that, that the money that we're raising for improving and maintaining the pier can go, and functions like this can go to, to what we're raising them for. I think I'll just have Jim give you a real brief rundown of what the day is going to consist of.
Hi. Okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to bring the love to the San Clemente Pier, okay? And we're going to have, it's for special needs kids, okay, so if anybody with a special needs child, friends with special needs child, or any condition, check-ins can be at 8 o'clock at the end of the pier, we're going to have a little easy up for check-in, and then at 9 o'clock, we're going to have opening ceremonies, as we do with the Fish for Life trips, you know, we'll have some speakers, and then we'll have somebody say a prayer, then we're going to have a child sing the national anthem, and then we'll roll out a red carpet and introduce our guests one at a time, okay? And then we've got probably the best anglers in Southern California for the pier coming to help instruct the kids and teach them how to, how to fish, okay? Pretty much it. Oh, and then, and then we'll have awards at the end, too.
That's great.
Okay, for the biggest fish, most fish, we'll come up with some other categories, too.
So I've had the opportunity to attend the Fish for Life, I think I went three times, because it was so great, the first time I couldn't help but go, the next few times when Jim was doing that out of Dana Point Harbor, and it's really one of the best things I've ever been to on council, it's incredibly sweet, seeing all these kids who get an opportunity to, to go out. Well, that was particularly unique, because they went on a boat, and they were able to catch fish, there was a, we made the wave to them on the way out of the harbor, it was really charming, every aspect of it, but really, it made them feel special, it made them feel loved, and the community got to be a part of that, too. I just, I couldn't be more excited for this event, so, thanks for doing it, Jim, thank Jim's, the Jim's, Jim squared, thank you guys for doing that, I think it's an amazing thing, so, kudos. And I, and with that, I'll, I'll move the item.
Okay, I still have some discussion, go ahead.
Okay, but I'll go ahead and second the item while we continue the discussion, but also want to say that although I didn't make it out on a trip, I was able to make it to a number of the poker tournaments where I, I gladly donated my losings to, to the event, and I think it is unique to the way you guys roll out the red carpet for the kids, and, and just to show them to, to make them, being a, a parent of a special needs kid, just, just to give them that, that individual feeling of accomplishment and pride is something that's, they, they just can't be replaced, so, good job.
Thanks. And I'd like to add, you know, on these boat trips, it's limited space, we're limited to 30 kids, 30 chaperones, you know, 100 people per boat. I'm excited about this, because it's come one, come all, you know? And there's a lot of families that have, you know, oh, that haven't opted to go on a trip because they were concerned about the conditions and whatnot, so this will be really cool. And two, these parents with special needs kids, I mean, they're, they're always on the hunt to go do something just normal, things that we all just take for granted, so, this is going to be a great event.
Jim, is there an opportunity for volunteers to help out that day, too, if folks want to help out with food?
Absolutely, we, we would love to have you.
Okay, great.
And if I could add one more thing, this is all totally cost-free to all the participants.
That's great.
So you volunteer to cut bait?
No, putting it on the hook. I'm afraid I'll cut myself, you probably want to give me a little some.
Yes, not on our new, newly painted rails.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want my blood spilt on that beautiful pier.
Okay, so Jim, I think that was one of my questions, is this really isn't a fundraiser?
No, it is not.
This is just an event?
It, it's an event.
Is it, is Pier Pride scheduling it more because, for awareness for October?
That, and also the cause, and like Jim says, he's limited to the size, and now, literally, we, we have unlimited space for these kids.
Okay, and what day of the week is it on?
Saturday.
Okay, so it is on Saturday.
Saturday, the 21st.
Okay, so 100 people, that will, you know, impact the, the end of the pier somewhat with the public fishing.
Gosh, I hope so.
No, they will, and they'll, they all have to participate and, you know, and help, and that is one of the things that you try to do, is, is mix kids that, that don't have special needs with kids that do so that they can see a different perspective, so the public will see that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
My only concern, you know, I, I love the event, Fish for Life and all that, is that with Pier Pride, when you came up, it was to do fundraisers, and that we would talk about events, and we haven't had that discussion yet, and using the pier for that, and normally this is not a space that we rent out. So I want the council to think about that, fine for, you know, staff's willing to do this one, but we really need to talk about cars going out there, because we're trying to limit that. So those are my concerns, is that we haven't had the conversation yet on use of the pier, so we still need to have that. You know, we had a presentation of ideas, but that never came up, so I, we still need to have that conversation.
Okay, but we're not, we're not expecting that the usage as far as accessibility to the pier is going to be any different than it currently is, we're not giving any.
Yeah, no, the public is welcome, and we're not going to, although the tent will be at the end of the pier, we're going to be using the entire pier, so there'll, it'll be all spread out, and there won't be any vehicles on the pier?
Yeah, so we're not doing anything that was, is, couldn't already be done without a permit, in other words, you could, it's open to public, right?
I think this is a great conversation to have at a future meeting.
No, but that's all I wanted to bring up, in, in doing this, it's not establishing that we're going to start, you know, doing events all the time on the pier, because that's something that we really need to discuss, and the public needs to, to come in.
It's something that staff has been contemplating, coming back to you, based on the requests that we get, and we can't shut down the pier because of our coastal permit for the pier that makes it a fishing pier.
Right, okay.
We wish you well, it's going to be wonderful, so.
Thank you.
My motion stands, I've got a second.
So is my second.
Okay, so we don't need staff to come up and talk about anything, future, future date.
Councilmember Brown, did you mention the fee waiver in your motion?
I, I mentioned it as is, with the approval of the fee waiver, so there's a recommendation, I approved recommendation.
Okay, staff, do you have anything?
I, I motioned for recommendation, excuse me.
Does staff have anything to add?
Total fee waiver, or is it the $30 that's in the staff recommendation?
I would, I, I'm fine with a total fee waiver, the, the.
$119.
Business says, I thought it was a flat.
119.
So there's a couple fees, they've paid the $110 application fee, good evening, I'm Samantha Thomas, Recreation Manager, the application fee is 110, and then there's an insurance that is required for the, the risk manager, and that's 119, they've chosen to purchase that through the city, we have that option. We don't typically consider those waivable fees, but that would be at the council's discretion. And then there's also a sound permit fee, there's a refundable trash fee, and then the site fee of $30, so combined. site fee of $30, so combined, if that's...
I'll tell you what, let's just make a motion to waive all future fees. What's done is done, and so, would that be okay? Jim's?
Future fees for this event?
For this event. They've already, in the past, probably the process of going through, putting those back wouldn't be worth it at this point, so let's just waive future fees, wish you well on your event. Is that clear?
Second the adjustment.
Okay. Sorry, I should have been more clear on that. Thank you, Samantha, for helping us out.
So motion by Brown, second by Swartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Come out on the 21st.
I love that so much.
Next is public art on city-owned facilities. Six I.
Thank you for reminding me which one we were on. We were all feeling the love and not going there. Six I.
Hi, Samantha.
Hello again. So Samantha Thomas, Recreation Manager, before you tonight, there, we have the mural on public property. To refresh your memories, this did come up when the Character Counts mural had to be removed, so per council discussion, there was a request to look at how we manage murals on our own public property, aside from private property. We do have a number of park facilities, restrooms, the community center, the aquatic center, and part of that discussion became, well, if we take a mural on, what does that lifespan look like? And that's really what happened with the Character Counts mural, is there was no lifespan on it, and it had gone well beyond its lifespan. So this report tonight and the procedure attached is going to give some guidelines on how it will be handled in the future, specifically for public property. And that would be, again, the community center, aquatic center, a park restroom, a beach facility, any type of amenities in that case. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Samantha. I pulled this item. I've, you know, I've been pretty intrigued over the past six months in our city. We had a mural that was done, the Triton Wall over on the laundromat, that was done in a little bit of a backwards fashion, but ultimately, it was incredibly strong piece of art and something I think that has been a real plus to our community. I'm incredibly supportive of this type of public art. I think it's, would be a wonderful asset to our community. I like the idea of really trying to bring something to bear that represents the quality of construction in our community. I mean, we have incredible standards in terms of what we demand from our residents, and I think if we're going to be doing public art in these processes, that we also ought to demand that it's a quality of art, that we're representative of the building, representative of the community that surrounds it, and so I'm really encouraged by it. I'd love to see things start to happen in that regard. I think we made a wise decision. We did the utility boxes a few years ago to really control and also demand a high quality of art from there, too. I go to San Diego most days, and they had, I think, a similar project where they just kind of said, anyone can show up and pay the utility box, and the quality of the art is not, it's not great, unfortunately, in really nice neighborhoods. And so I think it's, you know, although it may be a little onerous to go through this process and have these conversations, ultimately, I think we'll be better at the end of that by having, I mean, we have such incredible artist community locally. It's really amazing, so I'm excited to see what could come out of this. And frankly, one of the things I'm trying to explore right now is maybe having a little where the city would take on a little bit more of a role in terms of helping with funding and having some of this art done in our community that will be to its betterment. But unfortunate, the Triton Wall was a private enterprise through the local artisan community, but I think there's an opportunity for us to contribute more in this regard, and I look forward to that, so just wanted to say my piece. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and to add on to it, I was, I was chairing Parks Rec when, when the Character Counts plan was put in, was put into place, the fundraising went through, the kids out there actually doing the work, and I was a large, large supporter of it and still am. I think that, I would love, I love the concept of adopting a procedure that would have maintained that mural. I miss it a lot because I think it was a statement of a generation that we had the entire city behind, and I think it warrants continuation of being there, to reflect that and the fact that our city counts for maintaining character throughout its citizenry. So whatever we can do to get that done, I will be supportive.
Do you move?
With that, I'll move this item because I want to set this framework in place and we can have that conversation going forward.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Swartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero. Thank you, Samantha. Item J. And this was public?
Yes.
Okay. So we have some cards. We'll go ahead and hear from the public first. Okay. First speaker is Kristi Sane, Kristen Ruth, and Ray Harshu.
I took over for Ray. Okay. Hi. My name is Kristi Sane, and I'm a San Clemente resident. I'm here to talk about Oktoberfest because I work for Casino San Clemente. I've been an employee there for a couple of years. I work most evening events there, and with having the Oktoberfest basically across the street from the casino, I think it would have a really negative impact on the business there. We have a wedding Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The event is supposed to be October 21st, which is a Saturday, and that wedding in particular is all being held on the end where the parking lot is. Basically, there's going to be music going on there that's going to be amplified music from Oktoberfest, and the way they have the stage set up, it's going to be aimed right, the speakers are aimed at the casino, where if it was on the opposite end, it would at least be aimed towards the beach. Sorry, during the time that the ceremony is going to be going on, there's going to be live music playing again at Oktoberfest, which, you know, anyone that's married knows that wouldn't be ideal. And, you know, this is the first time that so many people come to the casino, it's their first experience going, oh my gosh, this is San Clemente, it's gorgeous, and what they're going to do is they're going to look across the parking lot, and it's being advertised that you can park in the parking lot, which with our CUP, we have 64 parking spaces, and that's also a concern. Where would our guests park? You know, I'd like you to reconsider maybe where it's being held, maybe have it at the outlet malls. And that's really it. Thank you.
I need you to, Kristen Ruth, followed by Tyler Johnson, followed by Jill Watson.
Hi, my name is Kristen Ruth. To start off, both my husband, I think he's coming up here, Jared and myself started this event, and basically, to keep it short, we started it just because we love the community and we wanted to be able to, you know, work together with everyone and see everyone come together and just have a fun event. We've done this event the last five years. We've had a pretty, you know, awesome, successful five years. We haven't had any major problems. I'm going to go ahead and let you take over. I'm a little bit nervous. Sorry.
So if I could just back up, we've been living in North Beach for about 10 years now. We've got two kids that go to school here, and, you know, we've thought about five years ago, it'd be really fun to have an event. We used to go to Huntington Beach to their Oktoberfest, and we thought it'd be a good time to bring one here to San Clemente. So for the last five years, we've been doing it, and we've had it at the Elks Lodge, we've had it at Old City Plaza. Last year, we had it at Vista Hermosa, which was a nice spot. But the feedback we got from a lot of the folks in North Beach is they said, you know, Vista Hermosa's great, but we really liked having it down in the North Beach area. So we talked to a few people, proposed the area, and that's what we're looking at this year. You know, I think we're open to working with whoever. I mean, we really think that that area would be great. In fact, if you look at the North Beach plan, I think, you know, they talked about, we want a vibrant village community of North Beach. One of their goals for the North Beach area was to basically build a foundation preserving local art, music, and surf culture. And, you know, we thought what a great opportunity for, for, you know, an event like this to be held down in North Beach. So, you know, one of the concerns that I would express is that, you know, I understand that there's weddings there, and we would be more than happy to work with the owners of the casino. You know, I think that there's probably going to be weddings there every weekend, and so I would just ask that, you know, if that's going to be the case, then, you know, it's kind of, I would say, in some cases, maybe makes it very difficult for anybody else to have events there for the event location. So just something to consider. But like I said, we're more than willing to work with people. Our proceeds go to the Junior Women's Club. We're not here to make money. That was never the intent. It was just to have a good time, donate the proceeds to a charity, and have another event in San Clemente, so that's really it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Has the Casino San Clemente reached out to you and talked to you directly?
No, they have not.
Okay. Okay. So we'll give you more time. You don't have to just speak for three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Just giving you the option.
One other thing, we are more than willing to move the stage. We're not completely, you know, we're flexible. We can move it around, and again, that's something that was never brought to our attention. We don't yet know of like exactly when the ceremony time is. We can arrange our bands, you know, just if we had some information to kind of work with, that would be helpful in a scheduling our event, so.
Okay. All right.
And we also have Junior Women's Club here, too, so.
Okay. Is that Jill Watson?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Other questions?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tyler Johnson, followed by Jill Watson.
My name is Tyler Johnson from the Board of the North Beach Community Association. The North Beach Community Association was formed to give a voice to businesses and residents in North Beach. We want the best for residents and businesses in North Beach area. We regularly survey locals to see what they want, and more than anything, North Beachers want entertainment, they want places to eat, and they want local events, and we feel like the Oktoberfest event combines all three of those, and we feel like the ECR lot's a great location for this and for other events. We like that this sets a precedent for this as a, the usage of that space is for just that kind of thing. We also want to support businesses that are here now in the historic casino. We, they've done a great job of resurrecting a great historic icon, and we appreciate that. Ideally, any new activity should add to the success of the other activities in North Beach, not detract from it. We understand there may be some differences of opinion between the Oktoberfest sponsors and the casino, and we hope that the city and staff can work with both parties on a compromise that's acceptable because we want both to be successful, but ultimately, we're here to support and throw our hat in the ring to support the proposal for the Oktoberfest event at the ECR lot, and hope that, you know, we understand that it's coming at a late date, and that we hope there's some concession and compromise that allows, you know, both parties to be happy going forward. Thank you.
So my, my name is Jill Watson. I'm a San Clemente resident and homeowner for 33 years here. I'm here tonight to talk about the Oktoberfest as well and asking that you consider it be moved to another location. I believe it's, I'm glad to hear you're here tonight because I would like to talk to you. We got noticed that this is very late, and so it kind of snuck up on us. I believe they're saying there's going to be a setup Friday, tear down Sunday, event on Saturday, so that's going to be more like a three-day event of movement going on, and we do have a Friday wedding, a Saturday wedding, and a Sunday wedding. That's going to be a huge impact to our guests, and these brides and grooms spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for their one day. I don't think they were expecting an Oktoberfest less than 100 yards from the front door. If there are 2,000 people showing up as proposed, I just don't know where the parking is going to be. I don't know where our guests are going to park when they arrive at 4:30 or 5:00, or I think the wedding starts at 4:00, but I can confirm that. This thing will be in full-blown movement at that time. So that's a big concern to us as well. I'm happy to hear she'll talk about the CAD, and maybe we can change that around a little bit so that music isn't coming right towards the casino. Our ceremonies are held in the Rock Garden. That is towards the back of the casino, but it's very quiet when the weddings are going on, the music is playing, the vows are being exchanged. So if we can hear bands playing over that, that's going to be a little bit of a problem. Our brides and grooms spend tens of thousands of dollars to come and have a wedding here, plus all the people that come to our town as their guests, so that's what they're going to be seeing, and I just, you know, if it was your son or daughter's wedding, how would you feel? I mean, that's just, I'm not against an Oktoberfest, I just don't want it in this little dirt lot where 2,000 people are impacting it. I think a bigger place would be better. I think a place where they have shuttles would be better, if they're open to that sort of things. You know, we, I was, I received an email from Mr. Ken Sykes on August 29th, and he asked me about the events we had that day, and he said he's the supervisor, we have a potential event request at North Beach for Saturday, and I was wondering if you had any events scheduled that day, times and number of attendees would be awesome. And I said, how are you? Yes, we do have a wedding scheduled for that day. He only mentioned that day. There will be about 100 guests, and I'm not sure of the times yet. We always do a final walkthrough. I can help you with that. I said, since I'm kind of new at this, may I ask what the special event is and what is taking place that day in North Beach? Do I get to go on?
Go ahead and finish.
Okay. So he just said, thanks Jill, I'm doing great. The number of guests you mentioned is all I need. That gives us a good idea. This would be for an Oktoberfest event in the space where we host the Wednesday Market every week. More info to come. I'll keep you in the loop. That was the last I heard from him. I knew nothing about it, and then our owner received something on, I think it was August 27th, about this. So we didn't know anything else about it until now. I mean, our weddings have been booked for months and months and months. So I just asked that if this could be moved. I'm all about, you know, having special events in North Beach, but I just think the impact to our guests is not going to be a positive one.
Just could you clarify for me? Because you came up, you introduced yourself as a San Clemente resident...
Oh.
And then you start talking about "we" in the form of the casino, so I am up...
You don't know what I do there. I sweep the floors at night. No, I am the venue manager, so I manage the casino.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Eric Sund, Assistant City Manager. I'll be very brief, and then I have Samantha and Ken Sykes here to address any questions. So this event didn't require council approval. However, because of the, we call it the ECR lot, it's kind of the nickname for the location that we're hosting the market, we thought it was appropriate to bring it to the council because, again, similar to the Pier Pride discussion, we're not actively marketing the ECR lot for private uses. However, in this particular case with Oktoberfest, it's somewhat of a community event. Last year and years prior, it had been partnered with the Elks, and this year, they're with the Women's Club, and so one of the things that we wanted to make sure is we got council's approval to do this type of event. Samantha can speak to the logistics or any questions that council has specifically to that. One of the things that I know Kristen and her husband are very big on is promoting mobility, so the use of Lyft, the use of Uber, walking the beach trail, taking the train, those types of things are encouraged, and from last year's event at the Meadow, we experienced very minimal traffic. Most people, when they choose to go to an event like this, they choose to find a designated driver. And so at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park parking lot, it was minimal impact because everyone chose alternative forms of mobility. We're taking into consideration all of the neighbors in that location as we work with this event and work with the applicant to make sure that it's of optimal setup for everyone. We're looking at traffic flows with our traffic engineers, so we're being due diligent with this as we plan it because just as much as Kristen wants it to be a success, so do we from the city's perspective. With that, I'll turn it over to Samantha. With that, I'll turn it over to Samantha, our Recreation Manager, and Ken Sykes, our Recreation Coordinator overseeing it.
Thank you, council. Again, Samantha Thomas, Recreation Manager. I do have Ken Sykes here, Recreation Coordinator. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the logistics or speak to any of the questions or comments that have come up. And Ken is working directly over the permit process as well, so he'll be able to speak to anything else.
First, I'd like you to clarify where the event is because we heard that it was across the street from the casino, and that's not my impression of the ECR lot.
Sure. So, the ECR lot is in between the Ichaberry's Restaurant and Kalani's Coffee establishments. It's the dirt lot where the Wednesday Farmer's Market takes place right now.
The other question, do we know stage placement yet on something like this?
We have a rough map, logistically. Currently, the last map we had, the stage was on the side of Kalani's facing ECR. But I do know that Kristin and Jared are excellent at working around some solutions if it's a matter of moving the stage where we can entertain that.
Yeah, it looks like it's pointing straight to ECR.
Yes.
And not towards the casino or the beach club.
Correct.
Okay, but it would go out.
Yes.
So, any monitors would go out.
Yes.
They're not going to go to the side.
Correct.
Right? Okay. I just want to clarify. And then what about 2,000 people?
So, 2,000 people is, it sounds like a big number, but realistically, we don't have 2,000 people that come all at one time. We didn't see that at last year's event. They come and go. It's a long event. It's from 12 noon to 9:00 PM. So, obviously, you know, you're not going to get all 2,000 at one point. And as Eric mentioned, there were no issues last year. Parking flowed very well at Vista Hermosa, and we had several soccer games going on. The fields were rented. It was just as busy as that area is at North Beach on Saturdays, so.
Okay. And maybe Ken could talk this, about this, or you can. What about the setup? They're calling it a three-day event, which I only considered that it's Saturday. So, how, what's going on on Friday and Sunday that?
I will let Ken speak to that for sure.
On Friday, they'll be spending their time putting, installing the security fence. They're required to have a six-foot security fence around the venue. Part of this event is a partial closure of Cayenne de Checa. So, that'll be taking place, and then the load-in for the stage, their vendors, and also the areas where the beer will be served, along with the restrooms. And then the food trucks obviously would not show up until the next day, so that's just minimal impact. But there'll be, most of those hours were used very extensively during setup last year.
On Friday?
On Friday, yes.
And then Sunday is just breaking it down?
It's like half the time because, just like cleaning anything up, it takes half the time to.
Is the city performing that cleanup and breaking down with the vendors? Are we performing it?
No, actually. All the, yep. The applicant takes care of all the setup and breakdown.
Do we have any supervision of it at all? Is anyone checking on it?
I personally go out and check on the site and work with them during the day of the event and for setup and breakdown.
Okay. Because I know how you do it, you know, and I'm comfortable with that. So, all right, that was, those were my questions. Does anyone else have any more?
I do. So, here's the question I had. It's obviously setup could be a concern because of noise, right? That's easily remedied. Coordination, I saw that the band times had staggered times. You had one like a 4:00 to 5:30, and a 6:00 to whatever the case may be. It feels like that could be also coordinated. Am I correct in assuming that as well? Okay. The only thing would be parking. So, from what I'd read or understood, that there's no events that day at the beach club. So, really, it's between the, it's between the Oktoberfest and then the casino on those uses. And then what about the parking? At some point, I think, you know, I know the trolleys have been circulating at some point, you know, have we considered maybe a trolley going between this and the outlets, or maybe to Pico Park and the outlet and back down to kind of help with the transportation and parking issues?
Well, yes, we have.
Okay. Do tell.
We would absolutely consider the use of the trolley. We know it's a great resource, and this town loves it. We have worked with Public Works Department and the traffic engineers. We've looked at alternate routes as De Checa is closed, and that is normally kind of a pass-through for the trolleys. We are prepared to do an alternate route for the trolley. But we would look to run the trolley as its normal route for the entire day as it would be on a normal Saturday. Coincidentally, Peer Pride's Fishing Derby is also on the October 21st date. So, we will just have a lot going on in our little town, and I think the trolley will serve many areas of the community, and we are fully prepared to do that as well.
Philosophically, and chatting with the council a little bit about this, isn't this the problem we kind of want for North Beach? I mean, philosophically, because we're not only, we're talking about Oktoberfest at this point, but at some point, hopefully, in the near future for North Beach, we're going to deal with a rented-out Ole Hansen Beach Club, a fully rented-out casino, a online performing arts center, as well as a restaurant use, right? Hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, as well as the continued use of the ECR lot. And it's exactly this type of coordination that we're just going to have to get used to in the community about how we would have events that would be scheduled so that each could happen in the same place as the other without stepping on each other's toes. I mean, this was envisioned for an entertainment district in our general plan, and, but it didn't mean entertainment only for one of those, you know, one of those groups on any given night, right? It's supposed to have this kind of aspect where there's some coordination. I certainly don't want to make a couple who's, you know, paid to have a wedding and to do all these things, to have that infringed upon, but I have to believe there's a way this could coexist peacefully without interrupting on the parking and the performance of that wedding. So, I would be, I would be, definitely would approve this special permit as long as we could be considerate in our coordination with those parties so that wedding guests aren't tripping over people that are, you know, that are just doing Oktoberfest stuff and other, whatever, vice versa, right? And so, you know, even if it means sectioning off a portion of the parking just for the casino that day so that you've got guests that are staying on their side of the fence, I'm okay with that. I'm grateful the beach club isn't involved, and there's not a bunch of stuff going on there because then we would really have a problem. Not a problem, a challenge, right? One that we're going to have to do many times in the future for years to come. So, I think this is a pretty good dry run for us. I think this is an opportunity for us to learn how to do this the right way and to, you know, coordinate these special event permits with existing businesses and be able to harmonize this because once the, once the casino's operational, beach club is back in line, it's been closed for five years, right? I mean, for however long it take, right? Go ahead, Steve, you can take your boundless of the flesh if you want here. But we really haven't had this problem, right, in a long time for North Beach, and I'm kind of glad we're having this problem right now. I really am. I'm glad this is a challenge for us. So, I think we just need to figure it out through proper coordination, and that's what this council needs to encourage and direct for the staff.
And I'm actually going to take the high road here.
Oh, you're sure. I appreciate that. Thanks.
So, that is, that is the entrance, our northern entrance to the city that is supposed to be a key spot and to, exactly what Tim says, is we need to find a way to help that portion of our town be as vibrant and as vital as we believe it should be. And I think finding a method of, and finding a procedure, establishing procedures so that all the venues that are there or that are going to be there can effectively work out how to properly support each other. And because you'll be feeding off them because there'll be venues there that are going to benefit from the other venues bringing people in and saying, "Oh, gee, I didn't know they had that here." You know, that's going to occur as you go along. And we're just trying to, you know, help that along and get away from what we've had in mothballs for decades. So, I would, I agree. I think we need to try to give some type of procedure and table to sit down and work things out. Myself personally, I wouldn't mind if that stage, instead of going at an angle, was facing directly to ECR, blowing it out that way, let the people hear the fun going on, but keep it isolated from the venue that we know there's a wedding going on, and maybe just sit down and pencil out the hours. You know, "You guys are going to be doing this. We're going to protect you on that. We're going to work on, you know, we're going to have valet parking or something like this to do this in this area. We'll carve out this area. You valet people can just use that. Okay, well, where are we using this? And, okay, we're going to do breakdown between these hours so you know that it's not going to infringe." Just look at the whole picture and, you know, sit down and say, "Okay, we can live with this," and find a way that either both of you, you walk away unhappy, but you're going to do it, or you both walk away happy. But one way or the other, you get, you find a place where it can be feasible to get done, so.
And one other thing I'll say, as these patterns get set, hello? I'm kidding. As these patterns get set forth in the future, for example, like, you know, we know at Oktoberfest it's going to be on a certain weekend, or that we were starting to get in these patterns, then each organization can plan accordingly. Next year, the folks will know at the event that they need to properly, you know, do these things. And so, it's new. It's going to be uncomfortable, but I think we can find a path forward. I'm inclined to approve the permit with the conditions that I had already stated, which was perhaps to move the stage, section off parking for the casino as they need to, perhaps approve the trolley, as well as find a way to ensure that the parking impacts are minimized as much as possible. And then we could, you know, move forward from that. I would also ask the casino representatives coordinate with the Oktoberfest and ensure that they have a point of contact on either side, that if anything's going sideways, that they can chat about it.
I just want to be clear that if we use the trolley, it's probably going to be about $1,500, and we'll use AQMD funds for that, that we have sufficient in the budget.
And that would run the entire day?
From 10:00 to 10:00 on the usual trolley route.
Wow. I think we'd benefit all from that.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. Okay, it'd be fun. It'd be great. I'd actually probably keep the Oktoberfest folks moving around, too. Taking the party on the road, you know, so.
So, definitely using the trolley, I mean, that is a major contribution by the council to try to deal with parking. But I agree also, this is a public area. We cannot, I'm not completely okay with coordinating with every event. I am because this is an outdoor event, definitely. They need to talk to each other, and I think it would be great if a break could be taken when those vows are said. Maybe on something like this, the casino would change where the wedding, the vows would be said. I don't know, you know. But definitely on this, when you see the stages on the one side, it seems like it could definitely be on the other side, just looking at the next intersection. You know, I think that's much better, and it doesn't, I don't see that it changes anything. But as far as when everything is going, there's going to be multiple weddings. There's going to be weddings at the beach club and the casino at the same time. We cannot expect either one of them to coordinate or change what those brides want with the other one. And I don't see them, I don't want to start that precedent, you know, having to do that. I see the bride and groom from the casino going and taking a picture at the Oktoberfest. I mean, I do. I think that's going to happen. But I think that definitely everybody needs to talk because I think in this case, because it's an outside event, it could be coordinated with that. So, I'm in agreement with that. I just don't want to set a precedent on it, and we do all need to get used to it. But this would be a good test, dry run, and it's good that you brought up the trolley. I think, you know, we're going to be majorly trying to help, and I do appreciate that they said that they tried to coordinate alternative transportation. So, I don't, with that, I don't think there's a need to space out 64 spaces. So, I'd like to hear you on that.
I'll leave that to staff to best coordinate how that would, I can't figure out how to do that the right way, but it just maybe you need to give a little bit of room for folks to, some buffer, I guess, between, you know, the Germanic Oktoberfest worshippers and the rest of the crowd, so.
Maybe.
I'll leave that to staff. You guys can best.
Maybe a beer bong for the bride.
I think we're getting into really bad territory now, so.
So, I think we have a motion.
My motion ends, as I read, which was effectively to, you know, approve the permit, allowing staff to work with it to minimize the impacts on the casino, and then, and then to also approve the trolley to run that day for a cost of approximately $1,500 between all of San Clemente that could potentially help offset the impacts of Oktoberfest on the area.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion by Brown, second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0. Thank you.
Next is a report from the Community Development Director concerning compliance with AB 2299, SB 1069, and AB 2406 relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
Good evening, council members.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Haven't seen you in a long time.
It's good to see you.
It's nice to see you out.
Yes, it's good to be here.
Oh, my microphone's not on. Sorry about that.
What have you been up to?
Well, you're about to find out a little bit what's on our minds right now.
Let's catch up, shall we?
So, yes. There's a lot of cities right now discussing this item, and the purpose tonight is to get some policy direction on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The state had passed a couple, three laws, to be exact, to make it easier to build what has been known before as second dwelling units. And the way that they have tried to facilitate that is by imposing greater limits on the city's ability to regulate these units. And I'm going to discuss that a little bit more in a minute. But part of that is by allowing accessory dwelling units is to, the law allows for those units to go towards the state's residential housing needs assessment numbers that the city has to meet as part of the housing element. So, an accessory dwelling unit, there's more than one way that you could go about having one, and it's for independent living units. So, sleeping, dining, it's like a kitchen facility, and sanitation. You could have it detached in a separate building. You could have it attached as a new space in addition, and then you could repurpose space within the house itself. And one of the main laws talked about, this was called Assembly Bill 2299, that nullifies the city's ADU ordinance. That was adopted in 1988. And at that time, the city council had decided that ADUs were only going to be allowed inland of the 5 freeway. West of the 5 freeway, they were prohibited based on several reasons with concerns dealing with parking availability, the adequacy of infrastructure at that time, based on some studies that were done, some concerns regarding density, and some other things noted in your staff report. Like I said, the law nullifies our ordinance, and it imposes limits on the city's ability to regulate these. So, what happens is by nullifying the city's ordinance, the city staff now has to review applications based on the state law, only what's in the law. And so, a big part of that is that an ADU, if it meets state requirements, has to be allowed on single-family residential lots. That's in a single-family residential zone or a multifamily residential zone, if it meets state requirements.
Can you just clarify that point? How can it be a single-family lot if it's in a multi-residential zone?
If there's a residence, just one built on a lot.
That's existing?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's how it can be. It's a one house in a multifamily or multi-dwelling, then that one can be, have an accessory unit?
Correct. If it's an underdeveloped property.
But not an existing condo, multi, no? Okay. That's what I need to clarify. Thank you.
So, one unit on a lot.
That's a lot or a parcel, right?
It's a lot, yes, a legal parcel. And, yeah, so that's a single-tenant building, one unit in a building. So, there's several differences between the state law and then the city's ADU ordinance. Of the more significant differences are related to parking and then policy west of the freeway. So, we did an analysis of the transit stations, and if the law says... So we did a analysis of the transit stations, and if the law says that within a half mile of transit stations, we cannot require parking anymore for an accessory dwelling unit. So we mapped that out and concluded, all the properties, it's looking like all the properties west of freeway, you would not be able to require parking, which is a significant change from precedent.
I have to ask one more question. I thought that was one parking space per bedroom, but we can't require anything more above that?
That's if it's outside these transit areas, so.
Okay.
The law says in certain instances, there's four different criteria.
Okay.
And if it meets one of those, the city can't require parking. If we can require parking, then there's limitations on what type of parking we can require, like we can't require covered parking anymore. We have to allow covered, uncovered parking, antenna parking in driveways. We could apply setbacks to parking if we apply them uniformly to all development. So like, for example, we don't allow single-family residences to provide required parking in their driveways, in the front yard. So we can apply that same standard to an accessory dwelling unit. The other significant difference is the policy regarding west of the freeway. So, the state law says that cities can restrict the location of accessory dwelling units to certain areas if findings can be well-supported, and on criteria such as proving that there would be significant traffic impacts, public safety impacts, that there would be inadequate infrastructure to support accessory dwelling units. So studies would be required to document and support findings that would be necessary to restrict accessory dwelling units west of the freeway. And then, in the event that the studies had the data to support meeting those findings, either the city council could prohibit the accessory dwelling units in certain areas that, again, based on the data, or require discretionary review process for a lot-by-lot review. So, we would analyze as you go, on a lot-by-lot basis, you'd go through a review process and whether there would be the sufficient utility capacity for that additional accessory dwelling unit. So there, there would be some options. If the studies proved that there would be big impacts, as I described, the city council would have impacts to restrict accessory dwelling units.
But we would still have to go lot by lot? Or we could say that area doesn't have the infrastructure? Which one is it?
One of the two. You could either prohibit it, or you could, if you wanted to provide for the option for people to go through a review process, to demonstrate that there was the infrastructure to support a unit, then they would have to go through like a conditional use permit process.
Okay.
Hello?
So, the city council.
I'll be right.
So staff is recommending the city council initiate zoning amendments to comply with the state law, it would formalize our compliance with the law, and then, there's three options here that staff's identified. The first one is, not only to comply with the law, but then to add additional rules where the law allows. So for example, if the city updates its ordinance, we could prohibit short-term rentals of ADUs. And there's other things that can be done, and we would consult with the city attorney based upon whatever direction the city council would get, were to give to staff and the planning commission. The second option would be to consider whether to restrict accessory dwelling units west of freeway, that would require studies, and staffs, in the staff report have noted that the cost could be up to $125,000 to do that, for traffic and infrastructure, and then also to look at safety, would be another thing. And then the third option is to comply with the state law, but be less restrictive. So, for example, to waive parking requirements uniformly in the city, not just in the areas that I had shown in that map. Those are the three options we have for on this. Do you wanna talk about each law as you go, or should I keep going?
And, let's talk about the, the choices, because you're not laying out exactly how the staff report is. The first one is just to adopt what the state is saying, but add rules. And it looks like the only rule is short-term rentals.
No, so there, in attachment one, we provide a more detailed comparison of the city's ADU ordinance, the state law, and then areas where the city would have the ability to add rules. So I just try to simplify the discussion and put it in that table.
Okay, so the only way to limit it because of infrastructure would be to do a study, an actual study on water and sewer capacity?
Yes.
That's the only way?
Yes.
Okay, and then, also the traffic capacity, that has to be a study?
Yes.
It can't be based on what our traffic engineers already have said for each street? You know, it has to have an independent study? Or, or like the fire department, if the fire department has certain criteria for streets, we can't just go by that?
We need evidence that's based upon this new change.
Okay.
So our plans right now are based upon the assumption and current policy of not allowing these units west of the freeway. So we would need to do updated traffic model of this change, allowing more units west of the freeway. We would also need to update an infrastructure capacity study to see if the, the infrastructure could support more units west of the freeway.
Okay, so would you take into account the, if you said significant safety, public safety, you would have to take into account whether a fire truck could drive down it if every single lot had an additional unit?
What we would.
On each street?
What we would do in that instance, what we're thinking is, we would look at, using the traffic results, the traffic study, to see if there would be any delayed intersection, big delay in intersection that would slow down response times, and then also to look at the, the adequacy of the number of stations that we have and staffing to support units in certain areas, so.
Is there any?
There'd be a couple of things we'd look at.
Is there any indication given, or, or for, a car needs to be able to back out of a driveway and not hit a car that's parked across the street? Is there anything for that? Is that a traffic consideration?
I think we'd have a difficult time analyzing that, quantifying that.
Okay. I just wanted to know what the parameters are for traffic. The last thing, let's see, so you don't, we don't know if we care about the driveway. So the narrow streets, that's where that would come in, not being able to back up out of your driveway if cars are, you know, parked solid on the street. So, that was, that's my only question on that. The last part would be on water, do they consider water pressure part of capacity? Or is it just serving those units? Like water pressure for the entire, whether it's adequate for the entire area?
I, I would rather defer that question to the utilities director, so he could.
Is he here?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm just asking, like, what the parameters would be if we were gonna decide on a study? What, what are we trying to look at? Because if we can't really quantify that, is the study really worth it, you know?
Yeah, I will add that our public works staff, planning staff, the city attorney's office would collaborate on this, to identify a scope of work, and we would also consult with the state to see what sort of parameters we would need to look at to support restricting ADUs, and then we'd come up with a scope of work and release an RFP to get proposals. So, we don't have all the details, but we would look into this further if that's the direction the city council wants to take.
Why wouldn't we adopt the state law, just as is?
That's one of the options.
I mean, is there any reason to hold on to what we've had? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at philosophically, this is not an issue that has come up a ton during my tenure on council, so I don't know why the rules are the way they are, for what reasons they are. So I guess I'm wondering why we would just say, okay, you know, what's the, I guess I'd like to know the philosophical underpinnings behind why we had our ADU in place, which is pretty dated. How long has it been? How long is?
98 is when we first adopted the ordinance, and then there were some state changes, state law changes while I've been at the city employee, that just changed the process.
Okay, so I guess philosophically, I'd like to know, why would we want to retain the old one as opposed to just simply adhering to the new one, as opposed to spending a lot on studies and other things that we, you know. I guess I wanna know what we're defending, you know, what it is that we're trying to hold on to with the rules, you know? Is there some, is there some Pandora's box of zoning that we, you know, that will open, and all of a sudden we'll have, you know, anarchy in southwest? You know, that's kinda what I'm, I'm looking for, maybe this will come out during the process, you know? But that, that would be more philosophically what I would wanna understand out of it.
So, to answer that question, in 1988, when the city adopted an ordinance, there are several reasons cited in the ordinance for prohibiting units west of the freeway. And some of those concerns may no longer apply based upon changes that have happened over the years, such as people using less water than what was projected back then. So there was this concern that the infrastructure couldn't support accessory dwelling units with a higher projection of water than what we've seen today. So the, the capacity, staff thinks that there's a good chance that the infrastructure could support units, we don't know, we'd have to do study, but that's, that's our suspicion. With traffic, to date, when we did the general plan update, the traffic system showed that there was adequate street capacity to, to fulfill the build-out of the city that was in the general plan. Certain areas of the city would be potentially more impacted than others if there were accessory dwelling units. Like in a multi-family zone that's designed to accommodate more units than a single-family unit lot with an accessory unit on it, is probably not gonna have a giant traffic impact.
Right.
In areas where there's gonna be narrower streets and longer blocks, and further access to the freeway, and the, the lots are smaller, then there's a greater chance that there may be some traffic impacts. But we don't, we would have to quantify it, we'd have to do a study on it, and, you know, we could only give you staff's suspicions at this time, we can't prove anything, so we've tried to not speculate much on this topic, and, and just lay out what the reasons were before, and then let the council give us direction.
Can I ask a question? City attorney, I own property in that area, I suspect.
So do I.
Kathy is pretty close there, but it's a fairly limited area in terms of impact. So, what are the implications? Because I know that there's a certain criteria and percentage, and how it applies, and this feeling, even though it's a state ordinance, ultimately the application in our town gets a little narrower. So, you know, I didn't really think about this when I read this, but now that we're going through the presentation, I'm.
Chris, can you pull up that map that showed all the areas, so Scott can see it?
Yeah, if I could comment.
West of the 5.
Real quick on this?
There it is.
If I could comment real quick on this, so when, if we were to do a study, because we'd be studying things like traffic and infrastructure where they're, they're interconnected areas west of the freeway, we'd be looking at basically entirely west of the freeway. We wouldn't be looking at these red areas only because the traffic system and the infrastructure system are interconnected, we'd have to look at it all.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think initially, we're looking at the whole city, right? Chris, the state law applies to the whole town.
Applies to the whole town, but the only, the only unit.
It might have implications where we have regulations, then the question is whether that's 25% of the properties in the city or not.
The other thing, the other thing is, the action tonight is to direct staff on the next step, it's not to adopt an ordinance. This is just to tell staff what our next step is.
What the will of the council is.
Yeah, I think that it's a study is, is not something directly affecting the property. If I, if I could just.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Actually, no, I've, I've got, I've done a lot of reading on this. Our, our city has been trying for decades to deal with density issues, low-income housing problems, issues to try to maintain what we need in, in the place. And I thought these mother-in-law, I mean, the MDU units were.
I'm gonna kick you.
Were ideal, only because I think it's, it's allowing us to increase our density, but within a controlled, controlled way. And so I, I love the idea of what, what we had coming on, and I just don't wanna fight another fight with another, another study and another battle. I think we got enough going on, where, where we just, instead of trying to fight state law and create our own ordinance and law, just like we, we've done before with, when we, when we adopted the behavioral, yeah, that's, that's just, adopt it, accept it, I, I'm for just allowing the state to work it out, and would give details to find a way the best to support the city.
Okay, well, I'm gonna talk as a former planning commissioner, and a city council, and the mayor, but our residents expect us to do what we need to do to control impacts to them, and not all state law is, is good law, and they give us the ability to limit them where we would have impacts. And so one of the things that I would say to you, Tim, is it's density, when you have more density, that's a big impact. And it's not just cars, it's people living there, and people next door to you, and the houses in these areas have, they're non-conforming to current building codes, so the houses are closer together. So there's more of an impact if someone has an additional unit, especially if it's in the back. And that was one of my questions, is, is lot coverage considered density? Because I didn't understand that part.
Lot coverage can be considered by the city, and, so when we review an application even now, under the state law, we can consider lot coverage.
Okay, so that, that would mean that a non-conforming house could not get any larger than it normally would be able to, which is, what, is it 49% of the existing structure? I couldn't remember.
Very close, 50%.
50, okay. I was trying to, I was hoping it was 49, so they can go 50% more. So if a single-family residence is already 50% more, which I think mine is, I couldn't add on anymore, or put an accessory unit in the back of my house, because I've already covered my lot coverage.
Oh, I think I misunderstood. When I said 50%, what I'm saying is, 50% maximum of a lot can be covered in a single-family residential zone. So if you have a building and you are expanding the footprint of the lot, state, even under state law, we can review any standard under the state law that applies uniformly in the city, right? So, if someone wanted to do, let me show you, go back here. Let's say someone wanted to do an attached accessory dwelling unit and expand the footprint of the building today, and it exceeded the 50% lot coverage, they would not be able to do it. They'd be covering too much of the lot.
So isn't it the same as what I said?
To answer your question, is it?
Is it the same?
It's a little different, 'cause you're getting at the non-conforming ordinance.
I was.
And the threshold, and technically you could expand over the, the first level and not expand the lot coverage, so I just wanna be.
You're right, they could go up.
Very clear, yeah.
And still have more lot coverage.
Right.
So, I live, I just have instances, I live on a canyon where we are not allowed to build towards the back of the property, 'cause it's on the canyon edge. Will that prevent people from building a unit that is behind the homes?
It would have to meet the same setbacks.
Okay, so, that has to do with lot coverage?
That, there's.
Doesn't it?
I gotta be a little careful, because there's certain aspects of the law we would need to consult more with the city attorney on, but I have a very hard time believing that the Coastal Act and environmental protections that are based on those coastal canyon setbacks would not apply to this. I have a very hard time believing that this law would, would encourage degradating sensitive areas in the city.
Right, well, that's, that's what I wanted to get at, is how's lot coverage done with that? My big concern, I don't know how your water pressure is, mine is terrible. And yet our staff says, nope, it's adequate. We, so, that is one thing that I am concerned with our infrastructure, is, and our entire street thinks that. So I think there might be something there, I don't know, Dave, can you answer this on capacity? Whether pressure is considered? Because it'll get to the point where we're like, you know, waiting for it to come on.
The minimum pressure, I believe, is 20 PSI, and that would be evaluated in the, the study, to determine what the additional demands would be from the additional units, and then determine what the impacts would be to water pressure in that case.
Okay, so that is one of mine. I don't know if you have that, yours, I think my neighbors would be very upset.
So I, I think what, well, here's the thing, is that, you know, in all the time I've been on council, I've never come to me and say, you know, this is a critical issue in our city, you know, one way or the other. I don't know where it came from, but I, I also don't know how critical it is, because frankly, you could take, say, that attached lot there, you could blow it up a whole nother floor and increase the. whole nother floor and increase the square footage, you know, almost by double on some of these lots in Southwest. And your density increases, your usage increases, all these different things increase, but, you know, I mean, it's not as if all of these same opportunities don't currently exist, just that people avail themselves of it if they want to do it or not, and some people select to, some people select not to do so. I just have never heard of this as a critical issue. I don't know why I wouldn't fight a battle that no one wants to fight for an ordinance that I've never really delved into much, that doesn't seem like it's a hill worth dying on. And so, for me, I'm more inclined to say, well, okay, you know, we obviously, yeah, do I think it's increased density? Well, all of our codes allow for a substantial increase of density if that's the way people want to go. If people want to live more, if more people want to live on a lot, they'll figure out a way to live on that lot. They'll go up another floor and they'll blow it out. You could do that, I could do that.
No, I can't, because my house has been added on to the maximum.
Oh, well, I could do it, I could do it.
Okay.
I think, well, I could do it, except I don't want to do it because my wife doesn't want to have that kind of house. So, you know, that's, it's just, it relies on a lot of choices, market choices and things like that. I just don't, I've never heard of this being something where it's a critical issue we need, like, that makes San Clemente great. Like, I've fought for all sorts of things that I think are critical. Second floor, third-story limitations on Del Mar and density requirements along main corridors. I just don't know if this is one of those things that really is going to affect the quality of life in our town. As a matter of fact, you know, I don't know if it really changed as much as what it is right now, you know?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
It actually, it has been an issue, and on my street, there was a couple of people trying to do accessory dwelling units, and they were called into code enforcement. You know, someone would have something over their garage, and they'd start to rent it, and the person that lived next door would say, hey, you know, I don't want that. So it has been an issue.
Well, I think if you, so, it just depends, I guess, on the use of it.
It's impact, yeah.
I just, I haven't had experience like that, and, you know, I really haven't had people with concerns that way, so.
Well, I can name some streets in Southwest, because just because I'm more familiar with it, and I didn't look at all the other ones, but if you look at Trafalgar, you know how narrow Trafalgar is? Add cars to every inch of that, if there's more units.
I guess you could blow up a second story on all of Trafalgar, and you could have more cars that way, too. You know, there's, there's opportunities.
You could, it's still the same family.
It's, well, it's just, but here's, even if it's the same family, right? It's just, there's more opportunity on each of those lots to do so. Because we allow for it, doesn't mean that they will do it implicitly. And, you know, frankly, I think there is kind of a new future in San Clemente where people are buying very expensive lots, and they're building out to the setbacks and up. And so, you know, we just may have issues like this going forward, so, but, you know, listen, like I said, I just have never really heard of that many concerns with this, and whether or not the issues that, why the ordinance was established ever came true, I don't know. And there may be a really good justification, but at this point, I'm just not seeing it. I'd just rather go with the state ordinance and say, you know, okay, you know, provide that direction. And maybe during the process, something will come out that says why this is the end of San Clemente as we know it. It just isn't readily apparent to me right now.
I don't think anything's going to come out if we don't do a study, correct? There's not going to be a process?
The purpose of the study would be to quantify, to determine if allowing ADUs west of freeway would have large land use impacts that can be proven to restrict them to certain areas. So right now, because the city, well, no, we can't, but before, when we couldn't, when you could not have an ADU west of freeway, it was very regional, right? You couldn't have it anywhere west of freeway. The city can't do that right now. We have to allow it in any residential zone on a single-family lot.
Right.
So to get into that, more of a larger scale of not allowing them to say a certain portion of the city, we would have to do a study. But we do know we have to comply with the state law.
Right.
And so, we are recommending that we...
Is there an opportunity to revisit it at a future date and do that study, or once we pass it, is our, is it baked in and we can't ever redo it?
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that once you adopt an ordinance, you don't have the opportunity to go and amend the ordinance. It doesn't preclude that.
And the reason I say that is because maybe there are some problems. I mean, do we want to spend $150,000 to shape an ordinance that we don't really need to shape? Maybe what we do is we adopt the state ordinance and see if, you know, if it is truly problematic, if we are having some impacts from it, and then look at doing it then. I, you know, like I said, I don't have, I guess, I don't really have strong feelings one way or the other here, but I just don't know, it just does never seem like a critical issue. Out of all of the things that people have emailed us about, I have never received an email about accessory dwelling units.
That's because they weren't allowed, so we didn't get anything on it.
In our part of town.
Even, no, they're not allowed. Realtors aren't allowed to sell a home and say, by the way, you can rent out the back room. They're not allowed to do that. So that's why it hasn't come up.
If I could comment, so, when, let's say, prior to the state law, someone came in with a building permit, and they wanted to put in a second kitchen, then with a full bathroom, we'd say, that's an accessory dwelling in it, you cannot do that.
Yeah, we stopped them from doing it.
You would not be able to do that. Also, west of freeway, if they didn't have a kitchen, but they had a full bathroom, it would be a guest house, and they can't have a guest house. So, that's just been the policy for years. I think, you know, it does, it does help to kind of go back to the spirit of this state law, and it's, it's meant to increase that supply of affordable housing and meet regional housing needs assessment numbers. And so, there are some, now, the state sees some benefit in it, but obviously, you know, staff is just trying to get an assessment of the level of city council concern to merit spending money on a study.
Well, for my part, I don't have concern with adopting the state law as is.
Can I just ask on west San Antonio, west of Ola Vista, are you familiar with that street? We, we just approved a new house on the, on that street on Sania, on the canyon, on Antonio.
Okay.
No, you're not familiar with that?
No, I know Antonio. I don't know if that project...
Super narrow, this is on the canyon, and we limited, I think we heard it, remember the people, this was going to be their home and they were moving here? And we said the driveway, because the street, the parking, the fire truck can't get through there, that they were going to have to, like, really, we limited their driveway and said that they had to, like, have a small car to park on that driveway. You don't remember that?
I don't remember.
Oh, it came to us, because it needed, it needed that for a setback. But on issues like that, on a street where we're worried about any more cars, what would happen on that street if we just blanketly passed this?
We can't, we can't address parking, right? So if there is, we can't require parking. It's off limits.
But if the street is too narrow and the traffic flow is inhibited, then we can do something. I thought that's what you said.
We would need to do a traffic study.
Right.
To prove that there was a potential traffic impact by allowing accessory dwelling...
Parking, right, traffic?
Traffic flow.
Right, and that's what Chris had said when we were going through that house, and it did come to us, is that a truck can't get down it now. So, it can't, it can't get down, because we have very narrow streets, and they do curve, you know, because Ole Hansen decided that they were all going to follow the land and not, we didn't grade very much. So, that's my concern on that, is I know we can't do parking, but I'm concerned with the streets that are very narrow, say, like Princessa. At this point, right now, with the homes that are there, you know, I'm starting to wonder if that should be a one-way street, because it's so narrow. I don't think it can take anymore.
But is an accessory dwelling the tipping point where it becomes from what it is now to unsustainable? I mean, it's, you know...
It's there now.
Listen, I, I mean, I've stated my point. I think we've passed the state laws as, unless, you know, Steve has a different opinion or Kathy, let's bring it to a vote and take action.
Yeah, I, and I'm saying, I don't, from what we were talking about, having to cut back on spending because of additional costs coming up and attorney's fees and everything else, I'm just not looking to draw on another, another study. It's not a problem now. I say we adopt, we adopt the state new regulations, and if it becomes a problem, then we look at it. But it's, I don't want to spend money looking for a problem.
Okay, well, I'm not willing to give up people's quality of life and safety to not do a study, so...
I just don't know, what's the safety component?
Let me just ask...
Well, let's be clear, what is the safety problem with having accessory dwelling?
Being able to get through a street, because there's too many cars, because you've now added more families living in there that could have one or two more cars, or even more. Because we know from other cities that have apartments, in cities, looking and again going through this, that there's so many people living in the apartments now that it's affecting the single-family homes for blocks.
I think we've extrapolated to a point where we're chatting about something that is, potentially could be happening, that has never happened, even in the Pier Bowl, which has an incredibly intense use in terms of traffic use, that just isn't a reality. There are people that are blowing up structures all over town with increased living space, bigger families, bigger uses everywhere. I just haven't seen the inability to move from point A to point B in our town. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not looking at it the right way, and it's potentially, you're right, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd be just walking on the sidewalk.
But ultimately, are we going to spend $140,000 to try and defend an ordinance that I really don't think is worth defending? I don't know.
That's my last question, is if we just limited it to traffic flow and the width of streets, how much is that as opposed to studying water and sewer capacity? Because I don't think it was broken up in here.
It doesn't say in the law with, whether one factor has more weight over another. It doesn't, it doesn't say that. It says that findings have to be met to restrict...
Okay, no, I mean the cost of the study. Do we know how much that would be if we just did our streets?
So that...
Traffic flow.
Our cost estimate right now is $10,000 for that, for traffic.
Okay, that was my last question, because 125 for the infrastructure for water, and I'm thinking sewer capacity at the plant, but 10,000 for streets. And I think because of public safety, because we have narrow streets, I know we do in Southwest, and I believe we do in North Beach, you know, also, and the middle of town, so I think we should do that, at the very least, to see what the impacts are. Because as a planning commissioner, former planning commissioner, this is an impact. And I think the streets might hold something to it.
Okay, I would be fine with that. A $10,000 traffic flow analysis to see if I'll have an impact on some of those smaller streets I could get behind, there's no way I'm going to spend $135,000 for a sewer water capacity study.
Okay, so, I have one card. Can we just hear from the public really quick?
Yes, and then after this law, if, staff needs direction on another law after this.
Wonderful, and is that the junior?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Larry Culberson.
Larry Culberson, resident. I'm very concerned about the fact that the state is ramming higher density down our throat, but I know that there's really nothing you can do about it. State law, you gotta, you gotta comply. But I urge you to be as restrictive as the state will allow you to be. Councilman Brown was asking for the philosophical reasons why we should do this. It's stated quite clearly there on page two, the reason that they passed back in 1988, 29 years ago, the reason they passed ordinance 977, areas west of I-5 freeway are too densely populated in residential areas. That's been true right on through for the past 30 years. It's still bad. Lack of adequate off-street parking within the areas west of I-5 freeway. It's worse now than it was 30 years ago. I think this is one of those issues, like the rental units, that when the people find out what's happening, and once more and more of these things start to happen in people's backyards, and people will be down here with tar and feathers, saying, why didn't you do something? So I encourage you to do that study, at least the $10,000 one, if not the full banana, because we've got to do everything we can to protect these areas from being overpopulated with too many people, too many cars, too much of a safety, impingement on our safety, and it's just not going to be good for our neighborhoods. Another thing that I was concerned about, under the parking there on page two, the, located within, within a half-mile, these are areas where you would not be able to restrict them. Located within a half-mile of public transit, located within architecturally and historically significant historic districts. So one of the things that the Historical Society's been pushing for is that we have some designated historic districts. And so, this is going to, if this is in effect, it's going to be a disincentive to designating areas as historic districts. So I didn't, didn't like that part of it all. But please do those studies. Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Brown, I think you're wrong on this one so far. The people are going to be very irritated if you just pass this as is, so try to restrict it as much as possible. Thank you.
Chris, I have one last question. Somewhere in here, it was said that if we didn't adopt something, but I think it was the junior units, if we didn't adopt it, we just let the state policy take over, that that would be more restrictive. And I didn't understand that part.
Yes, that's the junior accessory units, yeah.
So we need to rule on this one?
Yes, there's, really, of the three options, there's two directions staff needs on this item, okay? First is whether to do studies, and then the second is whether to be more or less restrictive than state law, you know, where the city has authority, right? So if the state gives us authority to have some discretion, should we be more restrictive or should we be less restrictive? And then if there's some area where the city council is okay being less restrictive, that it'd be good to have some policy direction going into the ordinance process, rather than just guessing what the city council's position is. If there's some strong opinion on a particular issue, that's in the table that I provided, and I have the slides, more slides if you want to see that. So those are the two questions that we have, and rather than break it down, we did the three options to try to help the council do that, but that's the information we need to move forward.
Okay, thanks. The only thing I would say about being more restrictive is that it takes into account impacts. And I am, I know we need more housing, and we definitely need it to be affordable housing, so I would totally be for, these cannot be rented short-term, they have to be for housing, you know, or families, you know, families come and stay with you. But at least if we are the most restrictive that we can, we are considering the impacts, whatever staff can come up with. But I think we need to do a study on the streets, because I think it's going to be an issue. I know a couple of them by me, they're looking at, they might need to be made one way. They're so bad now. You know, there's streets I won't take, because I know that I will have trouble getting through, especially if someone's trying to park and they just can't find a space.
Well, I mean, is this the straw that breaks the camel's back?
Well, we're allowed to do it. It's just like SB 2, there were certain things we were allowed to take into account by state statute, and we did that.
And we're still fighting that?
No, well, we shouldn't be, because we met the statute.
Well, you know, my opinion hasn't changed. I mean, I'll do the traffic study for 10,000, because, you know, in deference to your concerns. Am I going to do an sewer water capacity study? No, I'm not, not at $135,000. And I certainly, you know, I mean, how much have we done in terms of heavy lifting on ordinances that improve the quality of life in our town? And ultimately, I don't think this strikes the heart of any of the issues that seem like a short-term living unit next to somebody's residential property. It's already not allowed according to our ordinances, even if you did build this, right? Sober living homes would be an issue. Well, that's been addressed as well. So ultimately, if it's, if it's built and it's for someone to use on their property, you know, like I said, it's, in my mind, it's no different from what could be the densification of any given property in our town, depending on where it's located, through second stories and setbacks, et cetera. So, you know, I, you know, I think that what happens, they drafted an ordinance thinking of this bleak dystopian future of super-dense houses in Southwest, but ultimately, a lot of the issues that perhaps they had in mind haven't come to pass, you know?
You can end up with a water treatment plant with an ocean view, but...
That was a vote of the people.
What I, what I will chime in on is, I'm not going to fight this over 10-grand study on the traffic. I'm not going to go for any other studies or any other money spent on it. I am a big proponent of finding a way to successfully assist people to get lower-cost housing into our, into our city to meet the requirements that the state is telling us that we have to do, and find a way that it doesn't affect our quality of life. So that's, that's really what I stand for. So I will support what's been suggested so far, is that we authorize a $10,000 study on the traffic and see how that would affect the quality of life as it affects our final statement on... statement on AB 2299.
And Chris, do you need on that particular statute, do you need that it can't be rented as a vacation, short-term rental? Is that on this one?
If there's direction to do studies, we would do the study, and then we would return to the council with the findings to give us direction on the step.
Is this already subject to our ordinance?
Because it's a new dwelling unit.
This inventory would be subject to the very same restrictions that apply to all short-term rentals. So I don't think you need to worry about that separately.
It's just where it's located.
But staff was asking for that. There was a reason you were asking to limit that.
Yeah, but attorney just told us that it won't. We can't.
I'm confused.
Unless you want to liberalize it. But it's already existing separately.
We've already got a block through our...
What was the question?
It's about whether or not we want to put in that you can't use it for short-term rentals.
Short-term, has to be used for housing.
We would need to initiate zoning amendments to make it very clear what people can and can't do, where we have discretion under the law. You know, there are some areas where it's very explicit in the state law what can and can't be done, and there are some areas where it's not as clear. The city staff would want to make it very clear what you can and can't do, just like any other sort of development standard. So there's consistency in how we implement the law, and the public has predictability in how they need to...
I think very simply, the answer to that, Chris, would be is we reference the ordinance on STLUs and sober living homes inside whatever we do pass.
Understood.
And say, just by reference, you know, it doesn't need to be included by name, because frankly, it's governed by a whole series of laws that we put into place through a lot of pain.
Understood.
It was a lot of pain, but you can't increase your housing stock for our community if you allow them to be short-term rentals. So it would be good to reiterate that. So do you have enough for 2406?
Well, if the city...
Well, we have to do the junior, we have to do the junior two, right?
Right. Well, I thought they were two separate.
So if the city council could take a vote, I think, you know, really, there's two paths right now to take. There's either do a study of some form, have staff do this study, and return to the council to get direction based upon the findings of that study, right? Do we, maybe the study shows that there's no impact, right? Then we have that direction. So it seems like the next step is, do we do a study and then return to the council, or do we not do the study? And that's what we need direction on for this law.
I think the answer you have denied is that this council is interested in adopting the state law with a caveat of the traffic study.
Okay.
To study the impacts on circulation and traffic.
Understood.
And that would be my inclination, that if there is a traffic impact or circulation impact, then we should look at that.
Okay.
The sewer and water implications, I'm, you know, I'm obviously, I'm not as concerned about the high cost of water, because we're all dealing with that right now, and other impacts. And so I think that's the direction I would provide. At least that would be, did you make a motion?
No.
Then I would move that we, you know, I move that we direct staff, in this case, to comply with AB 2299 with a caveat of doing a traffic study for $10,000, and see if there will be the impacts, and if there are stated impacts, bring those back, and at that time we'll look at restrictions.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Brown, second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0. So now junior dwelling units.
Junior.
You're going to tell us how those are different.
Yes, junior units are smaller, they're maximum 500 square feet. They must be within the house itself, so the repurposed space, taking a bedroom and making it into a unit. So that would be having a family member usually living with you and having a space for them. And so there's some differences in the law. If you, the city council has the option, it is not a state mandate, to have a JADU ordinance that provides less restrictions on smaller units. So by adopting this, for example, the city council would be allowing to not require a full bathroom in the unit to have an accessory dwelling unit. You could share the bathroom of the residence. That would be an example of how a JADU ordinance would be a little bit more flexible than the regular state requirements. So this is something that, and I have a matrix in there, and I have a slide if this is confusing, but really what this is, is to make it so, to provide more options. If someone wanted to have a smaller unit, like a bedroom in their home, and repurpose it for an accessory dwelling unit without imposing more regulations than this would allow.
Can you give me an example of why someone would do this?
Or why they can't do it right now?
Because, here, let me, let me... So these are the types of accessory dwelling units, and on the right is a smaller unit, a junior accessory dwelling unit. And I have encircled there some key differences. One is that if you have a junior accessory dwelling unit, you need less cooking area, cooking facilities in a unit, and you do not need a full bathroom in a unit. You would be able to share the bathroom in the residence. So those are the main differences in this table. You can't have additional fire safety and requirements. You cannot require parking for a junior accessory dwelling unit. So there's a number of parameters, I think I have here. So this is what would be in a junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. You can have one in a house. You must have a separate entry, interior and exterior. Must be owner-occupied in the house or in the accessory dwelling unit. You cannot sell it separately. With the deed restriction, to make it clear, you cannot require parking, you can't have extra fire safety and utility service, and you must review it at a staff level under 120 days.
Wait, one question real quick. So you could have a unit inside your house, and you don't have to provide heat to it? Because you can't require, you said something about service to it, utility service. So they...
You can't...
No extra fire safety and utility service? So could someone say redo their garage and just tell the people, "Sorry, you don't get a bathroom, and there's not going to be any heat."
No.
But you can rent this.
No, it still has to meet building and safety requirements, but what this is getting at is, is if the home doesn't require sprinklers, that's my understanding, if the home doesn't require sprinklers, you can't impose additional special requirements to repurpose a room in your house.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what this is stopping people from already doing. So I have an adult special need person living with me, and I want to give them a separate entryway into their 475-foot, square-foot room. He barely knows how to boil water, so I'm not going to be concerned about giving him a separate kitchen area. He'll have a small eating area, and he's got like a half-bath. But couldn't I do that now?
Not under the state law. Under the state law, you need to have more cooking facilities than what you described, and you need a full bathroom. Even if the person that would be living in that space, say a family member, doesn't need that. The state law requires that.
Because it's a dwelling.
So this is to provide additional opportunity for people, in particular, what the law was initially drafted for was to have a family member in your house and care for them. You know, that was the original. So this is to really facilitate that. Well, right now, under the state law, you would need a full bathroom and a kitchen in the junior unit. If you adopt this ordinance, you would make it where they do not have to have additional parking required. They would not need a full bathroom, like they could have a toilet and a sink, and they could have like a hot plate in there. They don't need a vented kitchen. That means the building code, you could, it's like a halfway, you know, it's not entirely separate space.
But they're allowed to rent these out.
And I just want to clarify something. So if you, Councilman Schwartz, if you wanted to do this and add a separate entrance into your house, you could do that currently today and not have to provide all these requirements. We have a number of houses that have separate accessways or separate entrances. It's when you trigger the definition of a guest house in our zoning ordinance right now that would require a additional parking space. So Councilman Brown, you also asked, "Why can't we do this right now?" Under our existing zoning ordinance, a guest house is allowed, even west of the I-5 freeway, as long as you provide that additional parking space. It was just a second dwelling unit that was not allowed. So it's kind of hard trying to meld the state law with what the existing laws are, so we apologize for the confusion, but there are ways to accommodate your specific request, and then the junior.
Yes. There's ways to accommodate it now without approving a junior unit, correct? Is that what you just said?
So it's just the parking spot's the only difference right now?
Yes, the parking is the main difference for our zoning ordinance from what a guest house was in this particular case.
But it's a guest house for guests that are visiting you, not someone that's living that you don't know, someone else living there.
Well, I mean, but it's not...
It's different.
You could do both, your guest house could do both. It just happens to deal with the kitchen. So a second dwelling unit's a full kitchen, while a guest house is a kitchenette. In both situations...
How would you know? Like, how would you know if someone's renting out a place in their home, or whatever the, I mean, I guess you wouldn't really know, and so, anyway. In this case, it really is just whether or not they'd have to add a parking spot to accommodate a formal use of that will...
So in this one, yeah, you don't have to.
My first rental was a couch in someone's front room, so something like that.
But that was a roommate, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was a roommate. That was James, wasn't it? How was he? Was he good? No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, so really, the only difference in our JADU ordinance between the state and the city is our guest house ordinance would, now we wouldn't be able to demand that parking spot. It would just be allowed for them to have that, and then also the bathroom, right, the little junior bathroom.
Yes, yes. Previously, we said you had to have your own restroom.
And but in this case, you could share? Is that, just have access to it?
Yes, if you chose to share.
It's kind of a funny thing, because what stops anyone from doing that right now? The city doesn't have an involvement in that. It's a leasing situation where they're taking on tenancy. I mean, are we in the loop on this now, or do you assume it just kind of happens and we just don't know?
No, I think that there's a way to, you know, depending on how you meet it with the building code, that's how we typically look at things, is if you meet the definition of a guest house. The added benefit of the junior ADU units, if you're thinking about mother-in-law or taking in somebody with special needs within your family, we now get to count that towards our RAN numbers, which is a benefit for the city, too.
Oh.
Yeah, you just have to be careful that you're not passing zoning so that you can, the state can qualify for things. I'm concerned about, I can see your point on this, I'm concerned about adding, letting people add units that they can rent out for homes and not supply someone with a shower. I have seen where people have rented out units and not given heat and things like that, so I'm just, I'm concerned with that. And it's not something that we have to do, right? We don't have to do the junior units.
No, you do not have to adopt the junior units.
I don't know, I think right now...
What is it that would stop them from not doing that right now, of not providing heat or a shower? I mean, is, can you control, we can't control that. I mean, unless I'm wrong, you know? Are you up on it? You know, can you control the heating situation on the...
Well, you have to have heat to a habitable space, so it has to be provided. So if you don't have heat, you have an illegal unit, and then that's a code enforcement issue.
And that happens.
Well, I know, but it could happen in the house. Yeah, I know. I, you know, I don't see an issue.
Well, you guys vote. I don't think it's something that we're, we have to do, so I'm not going to do it at this point. I think we're already adding...
This is optional?
It's optional.
And we can bring more information back on this one.
Why would we, why would we pass this ordinance? Is there any benefit to our residents?
I think, personally, I think that it does allow more flexibility if you are looking in a multi-generational living situation within your home, and that is a trend where you have more than one family living within a home, and this is a tool in order to help facilitate that.
Also, as our population seniors out...
They happen with greater frequency.
I'm just thinking that...
Like caretaker scenarios, too?
Give more option to our residents to, yeah, perfectly, example is to have these senior residents that have, that need someone to be there to help take care of them. This would allow them to do that without having to go through more...
Build a new kitchen.
Yeah.
And we can have the planning commission look more in depth into that as we're going through this process.
Okay, I'll move this ordinance as is.
Okay, motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Schwartz.
Oh, excuse me, to initiate...
Yeah, initiate.
So sorry, what's the proper term, to initiate the zoning change?
This will code amendments for the regulation.
That's initiated and...
Yes, what she said.
Thank you.
And I second what he said.
That she said.
Second by Schwartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Two, and I vote no. So it's 2-1. Passes 2-1-0.
2-1.
I'm just not, I don't want my name on it. Thank you all.
I'd like to call it the...
Don't call it that. Okay, oral communications, part two. I don't have any cards.
I see everyone leaving.
That's the other thing.
Okay.
City manager?
No.
City attorney?
Nothing, one and I, thank you.
Council members?
Yeah, I have one thing I just wanted to bring up, and for our empty group here. Early on, we had a wall-to-wall carpet of people in here, all regarding the ongoing battle with memorial care and our hospital. And I appreciate the fact that we have a lot of support that gives kudos to the council for its continuing fight. It is a battle, and it is not over by any means. We seem to be, take three steps forward and four steps back on a daily basis, and, you know, Chris and myself are the two that are on the committee to help get a resolution to this. The council gave us a tremendous amount of support to find a resolution, and we've gone with open arms and open minds to meetings and have, are in a circle. We're not, we're not getting anywhere. And so I want to put out there that please do what they're asking as far as, let the governor know that we need the legislation signed off on, that we need help down here, and for all our residents to, don't be shy, and let their elected, we know, you don't have to send emails to the city council, but everyone else that you vote for, please send them an email. Thank you.
Still looking for that?
Yeah.
I will, while you're looking for that, I'll talk about the C-Fest that was this weekend on the pier. It was very well-attended, it always is. The chatter was really good, the booths were excellent. Steve Schwartz and I were judges for it, and how many did we taste? 14?
School band.
I think it was 14 samples that we had to taste, and they were all, they were all really good. And so did our lieutenant in the back there, he did that. And I believe the fishermen won again for their chatter, and so did, was it the San Clemente Journal? Shelley Kindred won first place from us for the individual.
Well, that's cool, because I had no, I left before they finally announced everything, and we did it all blind, so...
They never tell you, but my husband's pretty good about going back down there, and he takes a picture of the board of who won. So Shelley was really happy about that, but their chatter was really good. We were all pretty unanimous on that. So that's it on the C-Fest.
Okay. I'm trying to find information on the carnival. When is that? Is that, Steve, do you know about that, when that's coming up? Isn't it coming up this, not this weekend, but the next 13th?
Oh, when did I see it?
Look on the website, we'll quickly announce that one. And while I'm doing that, there's a few things, it was an extremely busy week this, this last week, a few items that I was able to attend on behalf of the council. The first was that I had an opportunity to attend the 70th, they did Evening Colors on the base, where we celebrated the 75th anniversary of the founding of Camp Pendleton. It was a really great, moving ceremony. There were a lot of the former commanders of Camp Pendleton showed up for that. It was down in Pacific Event Center. I believe Councilman Doncheck was there, as well as Wayne Eggleston was there, and so we had great representation there. This past Wednesday, I also went to the 1st Marine Division. This past Wednesday, I also went to the First Marine Division Community Appreciation Reception. It was out on the base. It was just a really wonderful and warm opportunity to interact with members of our military. They do so much for us. And the general's wife were very welcoming, and it was a tremendous opportunity to be with them. And then also, the Friday before, I had the opportunity to go to John Wayne Day with the 2nd Battalion, 4th Marines, and it was great. Got to be able to hang out with some of the friends and the families and the Marines from 2-4, our adopted unit, and spend some time on base with them. What a wonderful event that was. We're grateful for them. In that, I had the opportunity to share with the general our newly-minted city coins. So what happens is, since I've been on council, we have a lot of these members of the military who come to town, and they bring challenge coins. And generally speaking, as you present it, and if the other person doesn't have to buy them a drink, mine's Diet Coke always. So I behave myself to it. But we've never been able to give something back, and so we finally had these made so that for when we have the opportunity to meet some of these VIPs, we'll have something to give them. They can remember San Clemente by in the future. Really grateful to city staff, James's office, and all those who worked on this. It's really a beautiful thing. It's something that'll be able to have a memento for many of our military and city officials going forward, so I'm looking forward to that. We also have one other thing coming up. It is the Carnival Colossus, sponsored by the friends, San Clemente Friends Foundation. It is, the carnival's going to be out at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park from October 12th through October 15th. It looks like, oh, thank you for pulling that up here at the Times. Thursday from 5:00 to 10:00, Friday and Saturday is from, oh, Friday's from 5:00 to midnight, Saturday's 1:00 to midnight, and then Sunday is 1:00 to 10:00. It's a place where we get to go and hang out with other members of our community and spend outrageous amounts of money on rides. So, yes, and junk food, which is always fun. So I always get suckered into it. I'm thinking, no more than two rides, $100 later. I'm, you know, cursing my fate. Anyway, so we want to, of course, welcome folks, invite them to come out there and take part in that as well. So that's it, Mayor. Yes, we wanted to, so, well, we still have to do the, I think we're going to do the second reading. Well, there was another thing.
There was, it was this, but it was also for someone who worked out.
I think we have a second reading as well over here.
We do.
Hold, can I go to the second reading? That'd be okay? I move we adopt ordinance 1646 entitled orders to the city council, the city of San Clemente, California, pending Chapter 10 of Municipal Code concerning speed zones on El Camino Del Rio.
Motion by Brown, second by Swartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0.
Why don't you do that one, and I'll find the other one real quick.
Okay, might be you over there, bias. Okay. We are going to adjourn in the memory of two people that we're thinking about. First is Robert Bob Lindberg. San Clemente lost a community legend on September 30th, 2017 with the passing of Robert Bob Lindberg. Bob was elected in 1980 to a four-year term on the city council and was re-elected in 1984 to another four-year term. During the periods of 1981 to '82 and '85 to '86, Bob served as the city's mayor. Bob was born in Arkansas and moved to California when he was two years old. After college graduation, Bob joined the United States Marine Corps, retiring in 1969 with the rank of Colonel. He then served as vice president of the Rossmore Corporation in Laguna Hills. After retiring from the business world, Bob pursued his favorite hobbies, nailing tennis, bicycle riding, bridge, and computers. On behalf of the citizens of San Clemente, I wish to extend condolences to Bob's children, extended family and friends, and to adjourn this meeting in his memory.
The other item we wanted to also, and adjourn this council meeting memory of was all those who suffered in the tragedy that happened in Las Vegas this Sunday night, particularly an EMT and first responder here, Colby Jackson, who I believe has a GoFundMe account currently, sustained a gunshot wound to the arm and was pretty seriously injured. He, of course, heroically shielded his Shannon with his girlfriend with his body and was an amazing EMT, has a passion for helping others, really is a tremendous person, one of many, I think, that evening who proved that this country is far greater as a whole than it is by its parts. And we are deeply grateful for all those who, the first responders, of course, who responded and were so brave and did so much in that case. And our hearts and our prayers definitely go out to all those who are struggling, and we're going to understand what happened, and we hope that they'll be able to find some measure of peace. So I'd like to adjourn in their honor. And we will adjourn to the next, adjourn to the adjourned regular meeting that will be held on October 10th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers located 100 Avenue Presidio, San Clemente, for the purpose of considering adoption of the 2017-2021 housing element. The next regular council will be held on October 17th, 2017, in the council chambers. Close session items will be considered at 5:00 p.m. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m.
Motion by Brown, second by Swartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0. That's it.